Good evening. Thank you very much for all for coming. I'd like to call to order the January 22nd Planning Board meeting. And the first thing on our agenda tonight is the minutes from January 15th. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of January 15th, 2019 as corrected.
A second. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. The next thing on our agenda is public comment. So this is for something that's not on the agenda tonight. If there's anyone here that would like to talk about something that's not on the agenda tonight, please come up and identify yourself and we'll give you two minutes.
Okay.
Seeing none. The next thing I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to bring forward the Planning Board discussion of the applicant for the Falmouth Housing Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're changing the agenda a little bit. So we have a decision.
Jim, I should note that we've frequently done this because these decisions will take long.
Right. We're trying to get, and we have some timeframes we're working on, so.
Okay. January 22nd, 2019 draft motion that the Planning Board is unable to modify or apply the repealed provision of the zoning bylaw section 241-38 requested by, in the application of Falmouth Housing Trust, to modify a special permit decision issued December 8th, 2004 to Albert Shamsy trustee. The Planning Board however, is granting a two-year extension from the filing of this decision for an extension of condition number one of the December 2004 special permit for a density bonus under the conditions described in the original decision. Findings: One, by its terms, condition number one expired three years from the date of endorsement of the plan. The lots were never developed and the condition expired in 2007 or 2008. Number two, the zoning bylaw contained section 241-38 which allowed the payment of a fee for greater density in bonus lots was repealed in 2010 and no longer exists. Three, typically a request for an extension is made before the lapse, not after the lapse, although there doesn't appear to be controlling status or statute or rule. The former section 241-38 makes no mention of the procedure to extend the condition. Special permit findings: Section 241-38 has been repealed and deleted from the bylaw and it is no longer within the authority of the Planning Board to apply it to new subdivision plans or modify conditions of previously approved subdivision plans. Motion by Pam Harding Arleary to extend the special permit condition, number one, for two years, voted seven to zero. In favor?
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment. This is three-year. We talked about two or three-year. Now it's a three-year extension. Is that correct?
No.
Know what you said?
Two.
Two-year.
It's a two-year. Two-year extension.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We have another one of these. I'd also like the motion to bring it forward, the Burton Trust.
Okay. And real small print, I might add.
You have good eyes, Bob.
Can you see it, Bob?
Yeah. Motion that the Planning Board vote to approve the special permit application of the Burton Trust Slade M. Burton and Janice A. Burton trustees under section 240-69D, maximum lot coverage of the zoning bylaw of the town of Falmouth for a plan entitled "Site Plan Proposed Building for Number 160 Katherine Lee Bates Road Prepared for DG Development in Falmouth." Three sheets prepared by Falmouth Engineering, Inc., dated September 12th, 2018 with latest revision of January 9th, 2019, scale one inch equals 10 feet, along with architectural plans entitled drawn by Rescom Architectural, Inc., dated August 7th, 2018 with latest revision of October 22nd, 2018, as well as a front elevation option that was submitted at the January 15th, 2019 public meeting with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant seeks a special permit with the Planning Board under section 240-69D for a redevelopment project that exceeds the allowed 65 percent lot coverage with a proposed coverage of 68.8 percent. The current optometry office map number 38A08088A001 is on B3. The proposed project is a mixed-use building with offices on the first floor and two-bedroom apartments above with associated parking, landscaping, and drainage. The business-three zoning district allows 35 percent coverage by structure and 65 percent coverage by structure, parking, paving. The existing structure currently, a dentist's office, currently an optometrist's office, is one-story at 1,960 square feet foot lot coverage on a 10,319 square foot lot at 19 percent lot coverage by structure. Existing structure, parking, paving is 5,694 square feet, 10,319 square feet at 55.2 percent lot coverage. The applicant proposes to raise part of the existing non-conforming structure and add a second story. The proposed structure will have 2,332 square feet of the lot coverage on a 10,319 square foot lot with a 22.6 percent lot coverage by structure. The proposed structure parking paving is 7,099 square feet on 10,319 square foot lot with 68.8 percent lot coverage, exceeding lot coverage by 3.8 percent. The applicant is also seeking a reduction in parking from 12 spaces to nine spaces based on circumstances such as shared uses proposed having different peak demand times in proximity of nearby street and off-street parking. Finding based on section 240-69D, for uses other than a single-family detached house or semi-detached house or two-family dwelling, a percentage coverage by structure and paving higher than provided in subsection A may be allowed only on special permit from the Planning Board upon its receipt of calculations prepared by a professional engineer indicating that stormwater runoff from the site will not be increased following development by more than 10 percent in a 10-year storm. That the soil loss rate from the site will not be increased above the existing rate by more than 10 percent following development. That the average summer daily trip generation will not exceed four trips per linear foot of lot frontage and upon the Planning Board's determination that erosion control methods to be employed during construction will be adequate to prevent excessive soil loss and that all landscaping and screening requirements will be met. The Planning Department received calculations prepared by Falmouth Engineering on December 3rd, December 7th, 2018 indicating that stormwater runoff from the site will not be increased of following development by more than 10 percent in a 10-year storm and that the soil loss rate from the site will not be increased above the existing rate by more than 10 percent following development. That average summer daily trip generation will not exceed four trips per linear foot of lot coverage and that erosion control methods to be employed during construction will be adequate to prevent excessive soil loss. Staff from the Town Engineering Division reviewed the applicant engineer's site plan and calculations based on criteria outlined in section 240-69D in a referral dated December 13th, 2018 and finds the additional lot coverage meets criteria outlined in section 240-69D. Therefore, the Planning Board finds that the project meets criteria for special permit approval under section 240-69D. Accordingly, the Planning Board now finds the following: A special permit granting authority shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Pursuant to section 216 of the zoning bylaw, the determination shall indicate and shall include considerations of each of the following. Finding based on section 240-216A, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. Planning Board finds the proposed project and lot coverage adequate per requirements of section 240-69D and 216. The Planning Board finds the size of the site adequate. The minimum lot size in a business-three zoning district is that of the nearest single residence, general residence, or agricultural district, whichever is closest. The abutting single-residence district contains lots similar in size. The lot in question is 10,319 square feet. The lot coverage is allowed up to 35 percent of the lot by structure. The proposed building is at 22.6 coverage. Total lot coverage is allowed up to 65 percent structure, paving, parking. B, suitability of the site for the proposed use. Planning Board finds that the site suitable for the proposed use. The zoning is business-three which allows business or professional office and two-family, both by right. The surrounding land uses are primarily single residences, offices, public use, and retail sales. The ways serving the site are part of the state highway system or principal roadways of the town. The Board finds the reduction in parking is adequate, 12 spaces to nine spaces, based on circumstances such as shared uses having different peak demand times in proximity of nearby street and off-street parking. C, impact on traffic flow and safety. Planning Board finds the impacts on safety, on traffic and safety to be minimus in nature and finds no net increase in traffic-related impacts over existing conditions and meets the requirements of section 240-69D. That average summer daily trip generation will not exceed four trips per linear foot of lot frontage. The total frontage is 85 linear feet yielding a maximum number of vehicle trips of 340, four times 85 equals 340. The applicant engineer estimated approximately 35 trips per day will be generated by the site. Falmouth Fire and Rescue reviewed the project and finds the 16-foot driveway access to the rear of the lot and the 20-foot parking drive aisle located at the rear adequate for emergency vehicle to access. D, impact on neighborhood visual character including views and vistas. Planning Board finds that the neighborhood visual character including views and vistas will be improved with the revised architectural elevations as referenced above and submitted at the January 15th, 2019 meeting. The Board also finds the proposed landscaping is adequate. The Board thanks the applicant for revising the architectural plans based on Board comment. E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal source of water and drainage. Planning Board finds the method of sewage disposal sources of water, both potable and fire suppression and drainage stormwater management for the project is adequate. Board of Health staff has commented in a referral dated November 6th, 2018 that the project shows a suitable septic system designed for the scope of work being proposed. The applicant will need to submit to DPW Water a plan showing an extension of the existing water main either from Gifford Street or Haddon Road to the midpoint of the property as requested by DPW Water Superintendent Stephen Rafferty or as otherwise required by the Water Department of Public Works maintains town water in the area. F, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The Board finds these to be adequate. The site is served by power and telephone utilities and adjacent to other public services including cable and internet connections. G, the effect of the proposed project on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. Planning Board finds the proposed project that has no impact on the supply of affordable housing. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the Planning Board finds the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter in that the proposed use will have, will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Condition: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, pursuant to section 240-221 of the zoning bylaw, this special permit shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if a substantial use thereof has not been, has not soon commenced except for good cause. Three, the applicant will need to submit to DPW Water a plan showing an extension of the existing water main either from Gifford Street or Haddon Road to the midpoint of the property as requested by DPW Water Superintendent Stephen Rafferty or otherwise satisfy requirements of the Water Department. Four, install bike rack as shown on the site plan.
Second.
Wow.
Good job.
Need a drink of water? That was good work. Please.
Drink of something else.
On both...
Thank you.
E refers to superintendent, DPW Water Superintendent by name. I think we should delete the name, just the position. It's also mentioned in number three of the condition, as requested by DPW Water Superintendent. I don't believe the name should be included, just the position.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Is that a motion, Paul?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that?
No.
Tom, you all set with that?
All set with that. We're marking it up as we speak.
Do that going forward.
We'll do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I have another comment, Jim.
Yes, go ahead.
And this is that, Tom, I don't know if you picked this up. Bob read it right. In the third paragraph, it says currently a dentist office. It should be currently an optometrist's office.
He changed it on the fly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, in the findings, currently optometry office.
Yes.
Correct.
He corrected it on the fly there.
I think the earlier one we sent out had the wrong doctor in there.
We've got a motion.
We already voted, right?
No. We have to vote on the main motion now.
On the main motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, forgot. Okay, we have a motion, a second, the main motion. Any other discussion?
No.
Everybody all set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay.
We should get the covenant.
Yes, we've got a couple of things. We need to bring it forward though. I need to have a, I'd like to move that we bring the Planning Board discussion forward. Decision, sorry. We're going to talk about the covenant and that's really all we need to do.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the first, Tom, you want to explain this covenant we have here?
Yes, this subdivision was appealed. The appeal ran its course, was denied. They're out of the woods now. Typically, the Board cannot endorse a plan during the appeal period, so the appeal has been settled. We've got a new Mylar that the town clerk has signed essentially saying the appeal has been settled. So we're now allowed to move forward with these folks submitting their Mylar to the registry of deeds along with the enclosed covenant. So the Mylar and the enclosed covenant will go hand-in-hand to the registry and the developer and start directing the development.
So this is something we voted a while ago?
Yes.
Okay, and we were just waiting for the appeals?
Correct.
And we have the document here that we need to sign tonight?
That is correct.
Anyone have any comments? It's already been voted by the Board. We just couldn't sign it because of the appeal. You all set in moving this forward?
Yep.
Everybody? Should we just sign it now and get it over with?
Or we can stop by the office, whatever works for you guys.
Probably better to just stop by the office.
Okay, we'll stop by the office. Pass it down. That's the original there for the signature. Okay.
Okay, so I move, what?
I think we're ready to go into the next hearing.
I move that we move back to the...
Original agenda.
Original agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a lot of people here tonight, so I wanted, just going to, a few rules. First of all, we always follow Robert's Rules of Order and in that, it is very important that this is a civil congenial meeting and we don't make any derogatory statements about the other applicants or anything. So just keep that in mind. If anyone does, they will be asked to sit down. And we also want to give, Pat and I said 15 minutes to the applicant. And if you need more time, you can ask for it. And two minutes for every further comment. And again, if you really need more time, you can ask for it, but we just wanted everyone to stay on pace here. And also, the other thing we want to make sure is if the point's been made by somebody else, please don't get up and make the same point because there's no way we could let everybody make the same point over and over again. And I know everyone feels passionate about a lot of things in this town, but let's just listen to everybody. If the point's been made, your two minutes are done. We'll go on. If you need extension, we'll listen, we'll talk about it, but that's the rules, so the game plan. So, do we have notices for this?
We do.
You didn't, no.
Oh, no. The first one is a Blue Flag Development LLC special print application to construct parking areas within the front yard and site plan review application for, to construct improvements to Sipuisa Campgrounds Bracket Engineering, Inc.
There are people standing in there, a couple of seats if you want to point it out.
Yes. We have a couple of seats that are empty if anyone needs to come in. There's one...
They're over here.
There's a seat over here. Please, please come in and join us. And when this meeting's over, there should be more seats, so we'll be able to handle more if we can.
And if I may?
Yes.
And if I may also point out, we have set up an overflow room in the old Water Department room down the end of the hall on the right. There's a monitor in there. The same feed that you're seeing here is on the, in the old Water Department room down the hallway.
Very good.
So for anybody who can't get in, you can go down to the end of the hall. I guess I'm talking to people already in here, so.
Yeah, we got them in.
My apologies. Do you mind?
This is a hearing that we are here to listen.
Right.
Notices.
And... And the last thing, Bob made, wanted to make the good point, is tonight's a hearing, so what we're here to, we're here to listen to all the comments. We're not gonna, we will not decide this tonight, we won't have a big discussion about it. This, tonight, is to listen to all you people if you have anything to say, and that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. And that's kind of a, a rule of law we have to follow. Notices.
Notices for this public hearing for Blue, excuse me, Blue Flag Development was published on January fourth, two thousand nineteen, January eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. In addition, thirty-five of Butters were notified by certified mail return receipt.
We all set? For the applicant.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with the firm of Madder McLennan and Fish in Hyannis, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Blue Flag Development LLC. I'm also with me tonight from Blue Flag are Terry Sanford, Brad Guidy, Jason Brown, and Tyler Hardy, Don Bracken from Bracken Engineering, the civil engineer for the project, is also here, Shane Ott, who is a consultant for AutoCamp, which will be the operator of this site, and I'll walk through their relationship during the course of my presentation, is also here, and my colleague, attorney Jeannie Campus, is also here tonight. Blue Flag has the property that's the subject of this application, eight thirty-six Palmer Avenue, under a purchase and sale agreement. We did submit communications from the Tessier Family Nominee Trust, which is the current owner of the property, that indicates Blue Flag is authorized to be before you this evening with this application. There are two applications that are pending before the Planning Board, and my preference would be to bring them together to you. That is site plan review and also a special permit for parking in the front yard on the site. So I'd like to present them together, and then obviously, if you have questions about each application, we can discuss them separately. So just to orient you to the site, again, it's eight thirty-six Palmer Avenue, Palmer Avenue, let's see. Well, Palmer Avenue is on the east of the graphic. The Shining Sea Bike Path is here on the west of the property. The property is a little under thirteen acres. It's about twelve point seven-two acres. It's in the public use zoning district. It's not in a Zone Two, it's not in a historic district, it's not mapped for any rare or endangered species. There is one wetland that's located on the site.
The mouse actually works.
Does the mouse work? Okay.
It shows up on the screen if you want to try that.
Thank you. Let's see, there we go. There's a wetland that's located right here on the site. As you can see from the plan, which shows the grading, there are pretty significant topographic changes on the plan. The elevations range of about seventy feet from a high at elevation seventy-eight to a low at elevation eight in the proximity of the wetland. The site, as it's familiarly known in town, is the Sippuys Campground and Cabins. It's a campground. It's been operating this property as a campground since the nineteen twenties, so for almost a hundred years before zoning was established in Falmouth, it was operating as a campground. And it has a hundred and twenty-two campsites, which are shown on the graphic in the blue and yellow, and those consist of trailer camps, cabins, and tent sites. There's also numerous structures on the site, including the cabins that I mentioned, two residences, an office, sheds, cabins, and, and various bathroom facilities. The total gross square footage of all of the structures that exist on site is about ten thousand seven hundred square feet. Here are some photographs from the website for the campground that show some of the existing features on the site, if you're not familiar with it. This graphic shows the proposed conditions. So my clients intend to keep the campground use on the property, but with significant improvements to the property to sort of elevate the camping experience that one will have on the site. Blue Flag Development is working with AutoCamp, which will operate, operate and manage the campground activity on the site. AutoCamp is a, a company here in the United States that has a luxury, provides luxury camping experiences in, in the U.S. And right now, they have within their portfolio locations in Santa Barbara, Yosemite, and Russian River, so Napa area. These are high-end experiential outdoor locations. Their mission is to connect people to the environment and to each other, so it's very important, the aesthetic, providing a very beautiful, tranquil, natural location is of utmost importance in the design. This location in Falmouth would be their first East Coast location, and they're really excited to have this opportunity to bring this project to Falmouth. Under proposed conditions, there's gonna be a reduction in the number of campsites, so a hundred and eight campsites are proposed. As I mentioned previously, there are a hundred and twenty-two campsites right now, so it's fourteen less campsites. The campsites are generally, as you can see from the graphic, in roughly the same location as the existing campsites. In designing the site, there's been a lot of work to try and minimize the amount of grading and disturbance that would be associated with these upgrades. There is a new clubhouse building that's located in the center of the site, which would be right here. It's about, it's two stories, a total floor area of about seventy-nine hundred square feet. In addition, there's a maintenance building, so I'm talking about structures right now that are proposed right here, that's about seventeen hundred square feet, and then a small shed here that will have bicycle storage and also the controls for the wastewater treatment facility, and that's about six hundred and seventy square feet. Parking is proposed in a pervious parking area that would be in the front of the site. This is different than under existing conditions. So existing conditions, people drive their cars to the campsites. Here, the idea is to keep the cars away from where you're camping to provide a more natural, tranquil experience, and so all of the cars will be parked on the easterly side of the site. For people who have mobility concerns, there will be golf carts that can bring them to the various campsites if, if needed. There are, as you can see on the screen, pathways proposed throughout the campsite that would be accessible by golf carts. These are also intended to be pervious, pervious surface, again, to keep the sort of more natural condition of the site. Some of the pathways and the clubhouse and some of the trailers will, some of the airstream trailers, and I'll show you a picture of those, will be ADA compliant, so there will be accessible camping options here on the site. The project proposes to maintain the connection to the bike path. And that's one of, I think, the really exciting features about this site is that there is a direct connection to the bike path. The hope is that people staying here will be out enjoying all that Falmouth has to offer, the beaches, the biking, the downtown, and get out within, without, out of the property as well. This plan shows, and it's hard to see, we've given you copies in your application, but the landscape improvements, there are significant landscape improvements proposed, particularly along Palmer Avenue. There is an existing fence that's in somewhat poor condition that will come down. A new fence will be proposed all along Palmer Avenue. There will also be supplemented with vegetation. The existing fence along the northerly property line also will be repaired to the extent needed and supplemented with vegetation. And then additional plantings are also proposed along the southerly property line and throughout the property. Having lush vegetation is really important to the operation and the vision for the site. Lighting, we've also provided you some information on the proposed lighting. It's all low-level dark sky lighting that's proposed. Again, operationally, being able to enjoy the stars and see the sky is important, so lighting is proposed primarily just for safety for the, the campers who are staying at the site. We've provided some pictures from some other AutoCamp locations that give examples of some of the lighting in, in their other locations, which would be similar here in Falmouth. As I mentioned, the property is within the public use zoning district. All of the dimensional requirements of the public use district are met with this project, and there's a graphic, I won't go through it in detail, that shows compliance with those requirements. I would point out, building coverage is very small, three point seven percent where forty percent is allowed, and lot coverage, nine percent is proposed where seventy percent is allowed. And so this slide, and I've, I've already hit on some of this, so I'll be brief. It kind of compares the campground use existing versus proposed. Again, a reduction in the number of campsites. Right now, all of the existing trailers and cabin, and cabins will be removed under proposed conditions, and unlike current conditions where people will come with their trailers to the campsite, under proposed conditions, all of the airstream trailers, and I'll show you again a graphic of that in just a moment, will be on the site. So you'll be driving in your car and not hauling your trailer under proposed conditions. The trailers are, and there's a photo that shows that they're designed to accommodate two people. If families have a kid, they could certainly come. There is a couch there, but really, the size of them are designed for, for a couple to stay in the trailers. That's unlike existing conditions, which some of the cabins are designed for up to seven individuals. So in addition to fewer camps, fewer campsites on the property, it's anticipated that there will be fewer people on the site than there are as compared to current conditions. And this shows a photo of some of the airstream trailers. Again, these are photos from other AutoCamp locations here in the U.S. There are several tents that are proposed as well under proposed conditions, and there's a photograph showing what the tents will look like on the site. And then these are photographs of the interior of the airstream trailers that are proposed. And you can see on one side, there's a bed, the other side, a bathroom, and then there's a common area with a little couch and a little sink. Within, uh, within the middle of the property is the proposed clubhouse. The clubhouse will serve as the check-in location for campers coming to the site. There's lounge area, there are bathrooms with showers for the people who are staying in the tents, which don't have those facilities. There is a second-floor meeting space within the clubhouse that would be restricted for people using the campsite. So I couldn't have my daughter's birthday party here at this location, but if I was having a corporate retreat on the facility and renting out the, the campsites, we could take use of the clubhouse meeting space. There's a deck area with a hot tub. There's a small retail, accessory retail area that's proposed that would sell youth items, convenience items for the camping. And again, it's for use by the, the patrons only, campground patrons only. Parking, again, under existing conditions, there is no designated parking area, and the guests will come and park at the individual campsites. Under proposed conditions, a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces are proposed, six of which will be accessible. Falmouth zoning bylaw does not have this as a category in the table of parking requirements. So based on AutoCamp's experience, we're proposing one point two five parking spaces per campsite, which we have reviewed with the building commissioner. The parking is proposed to be a pervious surface that are, again, sort of more consistent with the atmosphere that they're trying to create on this, maintain and create on the site. It's also better for drainage. That, however, will require relief from the zoning board to allow for a surface other than pavement. So when we get to the zoning board, that will be part of the relief we were requesting from the ZBA. And the parking has been carefully designed to blend in with existing site features and also be buffered from, from the views off of Palmer Avenue. And in designing the site, it's been very important for the, the project team to really try to preserve the existing site as much as possible and limit the amount of new disturbance. So as I mentioned, there's a very small percent of lot coverage that's proposed, and you can see some of the efforts, which I won't go through in detail, that were undertaken to maintain what's on the site and minimize the amount of site work. These include, and I'll get to a slide in a moment, a new wastewater treatment facility in leaching areas, and so the decision was made to put the parking on top of the soil absorption systems for the new wastewater treatment to, again, minimize the amount of clearing that would have to be undertaken on the site. That gets to the wastewater treatment slide. So under existing conditions, the site wastewater is currently handled through cesspools, septic systems, and leach fields. It is not being treated presently for nitrogen removal. Under proposed conditions, all of the existing systems would be pumped and abandoned, and a single innovative alternative wastewater treatment system is proposed to be installed, which will result in a substantial reduction of nitrogen. So we've done some preliminary calculations and concluded, our engineers concluded, that the existing site has about a fifteen point four seven parts per million nitrogen load. Under proposed conditions, it would be about six point three four parts per million, so it's a reduction of over nine parts per million in nitrogen. We have met informally with the Board of Health to review this project and the plans. We will have to formally file with the Board of Health for approval of the IA system, so that is something that is still in the works. Drainage, the existing site contains virtually no stormwater drainage systems. Under proposed conditions, again, a significant improvement. There will be stormwater catch basins and drainage features to contain and treat all of the stormwater all on-site. These will be done in compliance with the DEP requirements for redevelopment projects, and you can see some of the other measures that are proposed to also help minimize the amount of stormwater runoff. Traffic conditions, so the project will reduce the amount of traffic volumes largely as a result of the reduction in the number of overall campsites. So our traffic engineer, and we've provided you with a report as part of our filing, estimates that there will be between, be between three and four fewer trips on a peak hour, and between thirty and fifty fewer trips over the course of a day. There are alternative TDM measures that are proposed. There will be bikes available for the campers, particularly with the access to the bike path right there, and there will be a guest vehicle that will be available to take patrons to attractions, to the downtown area, to beaches. In addition, we believe there will be a qualitative improvement, so now people bring their camper trailers or their RVs to the site. That won't happen under existing conditions, it'll just be passenger cars that come in and out of the site. And access and circulation, the driveway will essentially stay in the same location as it is right now. Within the site, as I mentioned, there are pathways which have been deemed adequate by your fire department. There is a letter from them in the file confirming this, and there will be no vehicular traffic beyond the clubhouse. So the relief that we're requesting or seeking your approval of is site plan review approval and the special permit, as I mentioned, for the parking. For the site plan approval, we meet, as I mentioned, all of the dimensional requirements of the public use zoning district. We are proposing a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces, which, based on experience, we believe to be adequate for the proposed use. We are seeking, and I'll have a slide in that in just a moment, the exemption to allow the parking area in the front yard. Again, we, we believe that the standard for the performance requirements are met. I won't go through those, I think I've addressed those.
Excuse me, uh, how much more time? We got a time limit thing. We'll give you an extension.
Yes. I have two slides left, so I am almost done.
I need a motion to extend for a second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Continue, sorry.
Thank you for that. So I'll turn to the special permit. So the zoning bylaw does allow this Board to grant a special permit to allow parking in the front yard. The front yard under your zoning bylaw is essentially anything on the street side of the principal structure, which is here, the clubhouse. We've proposed the clubhouse at a location that takes advantage of the high topography, and there are views of the water from the clubhouse, but it results in a three-hundred-foot setback from the front of the clubhouse to the road. And so it would be impractical to put parking behind the clubhouse because you would lose so much of the site. In addition, consistent with the vision of the site of really separating cars from the camping experience, it was important to put the cars and the parking at one end of the property, and it made the most sense from a screening and topography section to put them close to the road. There is a fence, as I mentioned, that exists that will be replaced, that's proposed all along Palmer Avenue, as well as additional landscaping to help screen any visual impact associated with that parking. So we do believe it meets the criteria for granting the relief that we've requested. Finally, this, some benefits to the neighborhood. Again, this is not intended to be an exhaustive list, but continuing and elevating the campground experience that's existed on the site for nearly a hundred years now, reducing the number of accommodations, preserving and enhancing the beauty of this site, improving the environment with a significant reduction in nitrogen loading, and also with stormwater drainage features that don't presently exist. We showed you where the wetland is. We are gonna be reducing some of the development that's within the buffers to the wetland. The project will require a filing with the Conservation Commission. We've had, our team has had an initial meeting with the Conservation Commission agent, but that is another filing that we will have to do. And so we think this is some of the benefits, but there are many others, and our, my client is very excited to be bringing this project forward to the town. We've had several meetings with the town planner and the assistant town planner, and appreciate very much their input in this project and the design, and we would be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Well, I just started off, I just wanted to, we're, both our town planner and our assistant town planner are giving us a whole new thing to look at with staff reports, and it was great to have this staff report done and, and reviewed. Thank you very much for an excellent job. It was great to have. Paul?
This is a beautiful site overlooking a little Sippuys at Marsh. I, I have two questions. One is, you mentioned an operator, and you mentioned operations in Santa Barbara and Yosemite.
Yeah.
Yosemite. Can you tell us a little about the experiences operator? Are they larger facilities or smaller than this, or something in order of magnitude?
Why don't I introduce Shane Ott, who is a consultant for AutoCamp, who will be the operator, to walk you through that.
It's a good question. I reside in Billings, Montana. I was a former-
Could you please introduce yourself?
Shane Ott, 3651 Donna Drive, Billings, Montana. I serve as a consultant for AutoCamp. Billings, Montana is the headquarters of KOA Campgrounds of America, and I served as their president and chief operating officer for many years, had a 25-year great career with them, and have spent my entire life in outdoor hospitality. And so, along with a variety of other senior executives within AutoCamp, I can tell you that they're a great, experienced operator of this new kind of outdoor hospitality called glamping in some circles, so.
Glamping, is it?
Yeah, glamorous camping.
How is that fellow?
Paul, another question?
Yeah, I just, size of location? Our newest property in Yosemite will be a very similar size, about the same number of units, 105 units. Our Sonoma Russian River property is about 50 units smaller. And then our Santa Barbara property, which really kind of launched our company, is our smallest property with less than 10 sites. But it's right in the city of Santa Barbara, and it's a very urban, unique location, and it garnered a lot of national press with lifestyle publications, and really kind of got the company excited about expanding our overall footprint, so.
What sort of occupancy would you expect in Falmouth?
In the summer months? Well above 85 percent.
I have a final question on wastewater, although that's the purview of the Board of Health. All these trailers have septic facilities, and I assume there's a pump-out system going to the treatment plant at the edge of the property. Is that right?
That is, yeah.
Don Bracken of Bracken Engineering. Each trailer will have a sewer pipe connected to it, and there'll be an actual sewer collection system in the road itself.
Gravity fed?
It's a gravity-fed system, and the treatment system is located about 60, 70 feet from the wetland, obviously the low point in the site, and then it's going to get pumped back up to the northern parking lot area that Eliza had mentioned, underneath the parking lot.
Treat it on the west side and pumping it all the way over to the east to leach it into the ground.
Exactly. And, you know, we have, it's a higher elevation, higher above groundwater.
Because of the elevations, yeah.
And it's the furthest point from the marsh.
Furthest from the marsh.
Right.
Jim?
Yes, Charlie?
In terms of traffic, what are the terms of rental? Do they rent by the day, the week, the month? What's possible?
Yeah, no monthly rentals, we're strictly in the vacation/leisure business, and so our average stay, you know, in Sonoma would be about two and a half nights. Yosemite, we're expecting more of a vacation experience, so about five nights. I would say somewhere in that same range here, three to five nights. So, we're, the question was asked year-round, you know, we'd like that opportunity to see if there is a market here. We certainly, you know, shoulder-season business is really growing, both in the spring and the fall, but, you know, I think we'd like the opportunity to be open year-round to test the waters on that, so.
How are the units heated?
You know, they're airstreams, and they, you know, they're respect out with electrical heating systems.
Electrical heat, that's it.
Yeah, yeah. Air conditioning, you know, dual unit.
Pam?
So I'm a little bit ignorant. My only experience with trailers was it, after Katrina, living in a trailer was my first and only experience for months on end, except we had to take two-minute showers because there was not enough hot water.
Right.
And we didn't feed into any system. So I'm going to switch hats for a second and ask, from an affordable housing perspective, if during the year there would be any opportunity for anyone to rent for a longer period of time.
I can't speak, you know, on behalf of the principals of the company, but I can tell you that our brand and what we're trying to create with AutoCamp certainly does not lend itself to that type of application, so. You know, in theory, RVs are not designed for residential use, so we prefer to keep them, you know, as a seasonal recreation.
To ask, is one of them.
Yep, yep. It's a good question.
Go ahead, Paul.
I wanted to follow up Mr. Bracken. One of the slides say you're going to significantly reduce the wastewater flow, and yet you say you're going to reduce the number of units from 122 to 108. But you're talking about increasing two to seven people per unit. I don't see that significantly.
No, reducing the number of people.
No, it's two people per unit, the other way around.
Two to seven?
Seven to two.
What's seven to two?
They're going to have two people per unit.
But somewhere here it says it's going to be up to seven.
They used to have seven.
And the actual sewer flows are based on the camping unit itself, and that was the main discussion at the meeting we had with the Board of Health, agreeing to what the flows would be. And this total system design is under 10,000 gallons per day, so it doesn't need a full-blown treatment system. Existing flows calculate over that right now, according to Title V flows. So that was part of also reducing the system, so.
Let me just add on too. I think, in addition, what I said is a substantial reduction in the nitrogen load, because the existing systems that are in place have no treatment for reducing nitrogen. What's proposed is an IA system that will reduce the nitrogen, so that's where the significant reduction is, in terms of the nitrogen load to the area.
And that was cutting it in half, right? Pretty much, yeah.
About, right, roughly 15 to six, or so.
Paul?
I just, more or less have just a comment. This has traditionally been a family-oriented campground, and what I'm seeing here is lovely. I'm not going to take that away from it, but it is strictly an adult campground, and I find that a little disappointing. So it's simply a comment.
Can I have a? Yep.
Bragg Weedy with Blue Flag Development. The, by nature of the airstreams themselves, they allow for two people. What we have also is, we call them base camps, where essentially families can rent out two campsites that kind of abut each other or are adjacent to each other, and they can rent them out at the same time. So if you have your parents staying in one with perhaps a toddler on the couch, the teenagers could be in the other one. There were also, on the site plan, there is a provision set aside for a children's play area as well.
Oh, good, because I didn't notice that.
Yeah, that's on there.
Pam?
Is there a pool?
No pool. Yep, yep, no.
We have an ocean.
That's right, that's right.
Paul?
You're going to be ripping up the existing pavement, and you're going to replace it with a permeable surface. What's that going to be?
Well, first of all, we're ripping up all the existing pavements, obviously gone through its lifespan. There still is going to be paving for the main drive and for the parking area in front of the clubhouse, and also a section is paved to provide access to the handicap units as well, and some of it to control some of the drainage on the site. The pervious surfaces are going to be a gravel base with some sort of stone dust or peystone surface. That hasn't been finalized yet.
Anybody else? All set? Anyone from the public like to ask any questions or make any comments? Yes, first of you, yes, sir, the blue space. Come up and identify yourselves. Jill, you'll be next.
I'm Lou Stern. I'm the president of the Sipperwist Place Homeowners Corporation. We have 41 homes right across the bike path. Two questions. One is, is there any possibility or a plan for renewable energy? And second of all, how long would the construction take?
Please answer those questions. Hard to do in the woods.
So, the renewable energy, currently, there is no plans for renewable energy. The existing AutoCamp sites use public utilities and onsite septic systems, so right now there is no plans. And the second question was?
Left of construction?
About a year.
Okay. Jill, you got some questions?
Jill Newbauer. I'm an architect in town. I didn't come for this hearing, I just want to say I am so thrilled and excited for this project. I'm fortunate to be familiar with the Russian River site, and I think anything they propose to do is going to be spectacular and an incredible asset to our community, so I'm thrilled to see this possibly happening.
Yes, please.
Unexpected. Yep.
Louise Miller, 845 Palmer Avenue. I just want to say I'm going to miss the campground. They've been wonderful, wonderful neighbors. But I live right across the street from, I believe, where they're going to put the parking lot, and I'm a little disturbed about that. So where exactly?
Ask, can we put the plan up? And all comments should be directed to the board, and then we'll ask them. Let's put the plan back up.
Yeah, the parking lot.
And particular, talk about the fencing and landscaping that'll be blocking the sun.
I'm right across the street.
People are concerned, the car headlights coming into their property, and that's, I would have the same question.
Is, just show me here, because I can't really see there. I'm sorry. Where is the entranceway, please? Where's the entranceway?
The entrance is essentially in the same place it is now, which would be right here.
Okay, and this is the parking lot?
Nope, right here.
Can you use the mouse, please? So we can see what your point is.
I can't see that up there.
So, here's the entrance, and it's basically in the same location that it's currently configured. This is the main road that will come in, and there's going to be a turnaround here. The parking would, are these space, oop, sorry. Are these spaces here, and here, and here are the ones that abut the road? So here, here.
Show me where catch-a-lot is, please.
Catch-a-lot is right here. It says catch-a-lot. Oh, there's two?
So this is the parking lot here?
It's a circle.
Okay, I'm all, okay, thank you very much. I wasn't quite sure.
Could you describe from the height of the fence and what landscaping's going there as well? Because you mentioned both fence and landscaping.
Yeah, it's a great question. It's currently being, design is being done, but the design intent would be a fence that's probably going to be some sort of horizontal slating, a really nice, clean look, and then on both sides of that fence would be vegetation. There would most likely be evergreens and a combination of bushes.
Both sides of the fence.
On both sides of the fence, correct.
So headlights will not penetrate?
No, you know, privacy for the campers is as important as people looking in, so we want to make sure that once you pull in here, you're experiencing the campground itself and not experiencing the road. So it's a big concern for us as well as for the neighbors, so we totally appreciate that.
What about lighting from people walking from the parking?
Yeah, so all the lighting on the site is proposed as to be dark sky compliant. The parking lot itself has pole lights, and we'll try to keep them at a minimum in terms of the height. And then the rest of the lighting throughout the site is basically ground coverage lighting, so there'll be low voltage kind of ambient lighting, that'll be pathway lighting, which is, I think there was an image shown on one of the previous slides. So keeping it very natural, you know, making sure that we're not contributing to light pollution, because again, the ability to look at the stars is important for the campers as well as neighbors.
Anybody else? Yes, they're next.
This is parking here.
Do you have a question, sir? Will you please, you, it's your turn? And all questions are through the board, okay? Go ahead.
I'm Ellie Costa, 19 High in Woods Hole. I have, with my family and friends, stayed at this campsite many times over the last 25 years, and I think that what is being proposed is glamorous, certainly, beautiful, and exclusive. It looks expensive, and I feel that the campground, for years, has served a purpose for good people who want a natural experience, who maybe don't have a lot of money, and it looks like that's just going to be wiped out at a time when we're all asking ourselves, how are we going to keep families in the area? How are we going to keep children in the area? How can we encourage young people to come to this area and continue to help us grow and thrive? So it concerns me that it looks like an expensive option for people who can afford it, therefore excludes many. And I don't see how this can be replaced. I don't see any, yeah, accommodation for the function that this campground has had for such a long time, a function that I think is really valuable to our community. I think it's not, it's not healthy if we're only a lot of wealthy people who can afford glamping.
Thank you. Anybody else? I saw another hand out there. Yes.
Hi, I'm Tower Romine. I'm at 40 Barnabas Road, so I'm going to butter to, let's see. I'm here. So I know you commented about the fence along the front. I didn't know if there was a proposed fence along the side, if that was proposed, and then the, again, where the sewer was going to get pumped to. I don't know if that's where this is or on this side, so I'm just more asking about dimensions.
I thought I heard a fence on both the north and the south side, but please reiterate that.
Just a quick question. Where you are now, there is an existing fence there now, no?
Yeah.
Show me again where you're at.
So, I am here. There's no fence from here to here.
Well, okay, so it starts kind of in this area.
Yeah, there's one fence.
Yeah, so we would continue that fence up and then add vegetation. In terms of the leach fields would be under the parking up here. Sorry.
So, to be clear, you're going, is the fence going to be along?
So, there's a pretty big gray drop once you kind of get into this area, which, right now, there's a fence, I believe, from here to right around here. And then kind of right when you get in here, there's a pretty big gray drop, which kind of makes it hard to put a fence there, but we could certainly, assuming that grades allow, continue that fence up and connect it to here, and it sounds like that would be possible.
Do we see any more hands out there? Yes, sir, please come up and identify yourself.
My name is Jack Fagan. I'm at 50 Barnabas Road, next to the Romines. The fence is mine, but I want to, I object to the large parking lot that they're proposing. 135 seems grossly unnecessary for the campsite with two people in a trailer. You shouldn't have any more than at least one per lot. That's what I'm saying.
Any more public comment? One more, two more? Well, we got one back there first. You're a little slow on the hand there. In the back, I can't see you, please come up.
Kevin O'Brien, 70 Barnabas Road. For the record, I'm here as in a butter and not as a member of the Conservation Commission. My concern is, do you know where the property lines are?
Questions this way, please.
Oh, are they certainly know where the property lines are? Because I think some of the fences that they're referring to are belonging to a bodice.
I'm sure they know where the property lines are, they might not know where the fences are. That's a history here.
Okay. And I, my real concern is the year-round operation and what they anticipate for occupancy in the off-season, and if, for some reason, they close it in the off-season, will there be someone on the property? It's a big property, and the campground was always very good, but in recent years, we've had problems with people coming onto the property.
Excellent questions. Please answer them. Please, you have to, people can only hear you at home if you're on that microphone, that's why they make you go up.
They are great questions, and yes, whether the property is open or closed, there will be a staff- be a staff member, most likely, you know, located either near their property or on the property, making sure that it's safe and secure. So, as a hospitality company, I can assure you that safety and security are our two primary, you know, concerns as well, and so we'll be very attentive to that.
But-
You have a campsite, are guests allowed to join people on the campsite?
So are outside guests that aren't staying there allowed to come? Sure, yeah, and that's why we do have some extra parking spaces as part of our plan. Is it, somebody will likely have a, a friend, you know, from the community that will want to stop in.
The ratio is 1.25, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So only 25% of the people can have someone visit. I was joking.
They can rent a, they can rent an airstream.
Yeah. John?
I didn't see it on the plans, but is the front entrance gonna be gated? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I forgot you, sorry. Forgive me. Thank you, Pam.
I'm Barbara Fagan. I'm at 50 Barnabas Road, and I'm a butter. And I am gonna be looking at a lot of trailers out of my kitchen window, and I am concerned about that. I'm also very concerned about the traffic, because Palmer Avenue is a very narrow road. And if they're gonna have people renting one, two, three nights a week, going in and out, in and out, that's a lot of cars. That's a lot of traffic on that road, and I think that, that's a point that I want to make. And as far as looking at trailers out of my kitchen window, we put up a very high fence at one point, but I think these are much bigger campers. I'm not positive, but from what I can see from the pictures, I think that they could be very high, and I just wondered if maybe they would put shrubbery and maybe a higher fence for privacy for our backyard, 'cause they're right in our backyard.
Can you describe the height of these trailers as it compares to the existing trailers? Please step, you gotta step up and do it.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the existing trailers, but being in the industry as long as I have, the airstreams typically are about 11 feet high, but certainly some of the motor homes that are on bigger, more robust chassis are much higher and taller than, you know, I would say the airstreams are probably more of a low profile, you know, trailer.
Maybe they'll put the low ones in my backyard?
Again, I, I think part of, the landscape plan is being developed right now, and it's as important for us to make sure that the campers have kind of a private experience as it is for you. So we have as much motivation to make sure that there's screening and privacy between the homes that, that, that you would as well. I mean, we want the people to, we want the people to feel like they're in nature and not looking into your kitchen. So, yeah, we totally, we totally appreciate that, and we'll make sure we do everything we can to, to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
One more time, anyone, any more public comment? Yes, sir. Got you.
Lou Stern again. I was also concerned with the, the price point, so I actually, before I came, looked up in Santa Barbara how much they charge at the end of June, beginning of July. And it was equivalent to what we charge at the Holiday Inn per night, around $375.
You'll answer that, then you're next, sir.
Just, just real quick on that, because I, I think one thing to understand is, there's also, the reason we're putting the tents on the site is to offer different prices so that people can come in, experience the site, and the, obviously, putting all these improvements on the site is, is quite expensive, so, you know, it, there, there are gonna be varying price points, but the tents are there to allow people to come in and experience the site without necessarily paying the price of going on a, a trailer, which would be equivalent to what you sell in Santa Barbara.
Yes, sir, and back, please come up.
Frank McNeese, I'm a, I'm not an abutter, but I'm a neighbor. And question I have is, has the location of the units that are being eliminated been pinpointed? And you may have pointed that out, but I didn't catch that. And is there any consideration given to eliminating some of the units that are close to the abutters?
Please answer it.
So, i-if you look at the, the site layout now, that's up on the screen, we, we were trying to be sensitive in locating these units, to, to be sensitive to abutters, but also trying to stay within the existing parameters of the site, because we didn't want to have to go in and, and clear-cut everything, so we tried to keep essentially the roads basically in the same place, and basically straighten them out, and, so that's how this plan was created. In terms of the existing locations of the, the, the trailers, they are, we can go back to the previous slide. And you can see here, they're kind of all over the place, so it's hard to pinpoint exactly which ones. I don't know if there's one in concern that you're talking about, but that, that, the ones in the blue are the existing locations, as well as the yellow cabins.
Please, please come, please come to the mic, so people can hear you at home.
Absolutely. Where's Barnab- Barnabas on the layout?
Sure. Right here.
Okay.
And here's Palmer.
Yep. Has any consideration been given to eliminating the ones along, along, along Barnabas?
Sure. Again, we, we were, we were sensitive in terms of placing them, but you can see this is where the, the new site layout. So again, Barnabas is, is here.
Do you have anybody else? Okay? And back again? No more than two times coming up. I just made that rule up.
We don't want to wear out the coffee.
Yes, Bob Johnson, Little and Secondess at Road. I guess my concern is, is there any way you could put a higher fence for those abutting neighbors? Shrubs that are higher, would grow higher than the fence. Leland cypress, for example, would grow very high, completely block out the trailers. So if we could get a commitment, that would put a larger fence, and then would it butts the shrubbery on the budding side higher? Leland cypress is something very large, 'cause if you put a six-foot fence up with low shrubs, it provides nothing for these abutters. Thank you.
Do you have a detailed landscaping plan that shows the size of the trees?
We do not have that to present this evening, but we will submit that. And understanding all these comments, I, I, I think, again, we're as motivated as, as our neighbors are to make sure that there's a, a large privacy screening. So, in terms of the exact caliber of the tree, I, I don't know just yet, but we, we hear the comments, and we'll definitely take that account in the landscape design.
Pam, and then, go ahead.
Have you reached out to, to your abutters at all? Have you had any meetings with the abutters?
We, we actually had a phone call with one of our abutters this morning, and we, yeah, two, two different abutters, yes, is the answer to the question.
It might be a good idea, so that it's not like this, but, you know, where people could feel that you're-
Sure.
So, we're gonna move along. We're gonna keep the meeting open, and we're gonna, we're gonna ask for you to present this detailed landscaping plan that shows exactly where the fences are and the size of the trees you're planting in those areas, so that everyone can see that. That's normally something we would see at this, this juncture now. So, is that right?
Correct.
Tom, Owen, you, go ahead, one more. That's it. Yeah.
Tower Romine, 40 Barnabas. My question is in regards to the, the four parking spots that are within 15 feet of this property here. That this, I saw on the map that this is 15 feet to their property, and if we can deem that, maybe it's not 1.25, but maybe we can do 1.23 per unit and eliminate these, these four, that where lights are gonna be directly coming to me and to this home, that would be, that would be helpful. So that's just my comment, that these four are very, very close to the property line.
We're gonna move along, but we're gonna be looking for a detailed landscaping plan addressing some of these issues, both at the height of the fence and the size of the plants. My own experience, if you can get Leland cypress to grow, in five years, you don't have to worry about anything. But they, they really fill it up. And this is a heavily wooded area, so it's pretty good. Okay. What? We need a date certain, Tom, for our next-
Well, given that we have a, a number of outstanding engineering comments, we might consult with council on when they might have some responses to our engineering review. Regarding the planning board's meetings, we have meetings scheduled for February 12th and February 26th as continuation dates. There are more in March, but those are the February dates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have already actually begun discussion with the engineering department. Don met with them last week to go over their comments. So our preference would be February 12th. We think we can pull that together by then. Yeah, that's a good question. When, how, how much in advance would you be looking for the landscape plan prior to your meeting?
Enough time for these people to have some concerns to come up to the office, look at the plans-
Yeah.
And be prepared to come back and address the issue.
You can do it.
'Cause they brought something up, and we can't talk about it, 'cause we don't have anything, so-
Oh, understood. The 26th, okay. So, on second thought, maybe we can shoot for February 26th, so we can have enough time for everyone to review it.
Okay, so, do we need most to continue to then, or we just-
Yeah, I think we need, 'cause we have a special permit as well as the site plan. So a motion to continue to February 26th.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Thank you very much. Exciting project. So we're now into Woods Hole?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna recess for a couple minutes. Please clear the room as fast as possible. Please clear the room as fast as possible. Let's quiet down. We'd like to get moving, please.
No, I kept it in its own piles.
So John was concerned about the presentation maybe. He's gonna talk about the presentation. You were out of the room. Okay, at this time, I need to recuse myself from this meeting. I've done a lot of business with the applicant, and I don't believe the appearance of it isn't appropriate for me to be anything involved, and I'd like to step out at this time.
Okay. And I need to make a disclosure. I need to let you know that I checked with town council, and I have filed a disclosure with our town clerk. Mr. Bogosian was our contractor under Longfellow Design Build for an addition to our house and some renovations. I in no way believe that this will affect my ability to remain independent and comment and take full part in this. I have absolutely no financial interest in this. So having disclosed that, the applicant here is Woods Hole Partners LLC. Site plan reviewed to construct a 43-unit residential complex at the property located at 533 Woods Hole Road to consist of 39 market rate, excuse me, market rate dwelling units in five buildings. Three duplex buildings on 20, 120-unit building and 113-unit building, and four affordable rental units in two duplex buildings. Cape and Islands Engineering. For the applicant, please. And we had said previously a 15-minute presentation, but obviously we went beyond that, too, so.
Okay.
Oh, we have notices, too. I'm sorry, Kevin.
Madam Chairman, the notice of this public hearing for Woods Hole Partners was published on January 4th, 2019. In addition, 35 of butters were notified by regular mail. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant's Woods Hole Partners LLC. They are the owners of 533 Woods Hole Road. For the sake of everyone involved, I'm gonna try to keep my comments to below 15 minutes. A little bit shorter than the zoning presentation from last week. The principals of Woods Hole Partners LLC are Mark Bogosian and Jonathan Janikys, both of whom are with us this evening. I'm also joined by Bob Amen from my office, as well as Matt Costa and Raul Lazardi Rivera from Cape and Islands Engineering. We have submitted an application for site plan review for the redevelopment of 533 Woods Hole Road. The property is 5.41 acres. It's located about a quarter mile outside of Woods Hole Village. It contains the remains of the former Nautilus Inn, which was a 53-room motel, and also a geodesic dome located in the southwest corner. That was previously the site of a 170-seat restaurant. It was designed by Buckminster Fuller. The property is zoned business redevelopment. The applicant's proposal is for the redevelopment of the existing decrepit site. He's proposing 43 condominium units, of which 39 are market rate and will be age-restricted to 55-plus, and four will be considered as affordable rentals, which are available for the state subsidized housing inventory. This will be a mixture of two- and three-bedroom units in a total of seven buildings. That'll be located in three market-rate duplexes, two affordable duplexes, one multifamily building with 13 units, and one multifamily building with 20 units. The applicant's also proposing to preserve and restore the dome. The intent there is to create artist studios, a low-impact use compatible with the residences. This will take place, this will also include the small addition on the northeast side of the dome, which will remove the unsightly dilapidated annex. The area around the dome will be improved with publicly accessible gardens and walkways, providing people with the ability to walk the circumference of the dome. This does require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals under 240-240 G1B, which we've already applied for. Our first hearing was last week on January 17th, and will be continued until March 7th. And this does also require a special permit review from the planning board, as we're developing more than 1,000 square feet and creating a need for five or more parking spaces. Site plan review is intended to ensure that the design and layout of a development, either allowed by right or allowed by special permit, constitutes a suitable development and is not detrimental to the neighborhood. In order to understand this proposal, it's important to, especially in light of the requirements of site plan review, it's important to understand the history of the site. The original motel with 12 units was built in 1954 and was run continuously until approximately 2004. Additional units were added in six separate phases between 1956 and 1980. When the motel closed, it has, since the motel has closed, it's fallen into complete ruin. The buildings, the motel buildings themselves are not salvageable. The dome, an important historic structure, can and will be restored. The annexes, which are not historically significant, will be removed. In 2006, the then owners and developer Chris Wise sought the development of a 43-market rate age-restricted residences. The significant difference in the applications is that those were all in a single large building, and that building was connected to the dome. At the time, the property was zoned as residential C. After considering alternate developments, the Woods Hole Community Association agreed to report, support the rezoning of the site to business redevelopment. In return, Wise entered into a covenant with the community association, which restricted development on the site. However, it specifically agreed to 43 units pursuant to a special permit. That covenant has been recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Subsequently, town meeting did rezone the property. Between 2007 and 2009, Wise obtained all the necessary permits from the Cape Cod Commission, from the zoning board of appeals, from the planning board, and from the Historic District Commission. Despite that, the project never came to fruition. It was never built. Sat vacant for about eight years at that point. Woods Hole Partners purchased the property in late 2016. Since that time, they've been engaged in design negotiation and permitting. Even prior to their purchase, they began discussions with the Woods Hole Community Association. Over the next year and more, the applicant continued those negotiations. There were scores of designs and plans discussed. The community association eventually accepted the plan that's being presented to you this evening. The community association voted and voted to amend the covenant and made this plan a part of it. That negotiation process took over 14 months. The amended covenant states that the Woods Hole Community Association is agreeable to the construction of 43 units in up to seven buildings, provided at least four affordable. It also requires public access to walking trails, as well as any other outdoor recreation areas that might be created. Our proposal is the same as was previously approved in terms of numbers. And it's the same number that was envisioned in the rezoning. The significant difference, as I mentioned, is the fewer market rate units. The affordables, in this case, to be located onsite as opposed to offsite, and the buildings are to be seven smaller buildings throughout the site rather than the single structure that Wise approved, which I think is best shown with their plans that they had submitted. I give you this history to highlight the involvement in the negotiation that the developers undertaken with the community association. This has been a hand-in-hand process that took, as I said, over 14 months and involved compromise on both sides. Business redevelopment zoning does allow for lot coverage by structures paving and parking of up to 60%. However, our covenant limits lot coverage by structures and parking to 40%. This results in substantially more green space, much more than is required under the bylaw. The landscaping, a plan for which was submitted and we're looking at now, is harmonious with the surrounding area, and it's obviously a vast improvement over the existing dilapidated condition of the site. And I'm sure you've been there, but I think it's important to look at what the site looks like today and has for a number of years. My favorite might be the last one, where you can actually see the sky through the building. The setbacks that were proposed are greater than are required by the Business Redevelopment District. That district requires a 20-foot front yard setback and 10-foot side and rear yard setbacks. We proposed a front yard setback from the portion of Woods Hole Road here of 55 feet and more than 20 feet from this portion of Woods Hole Road that is governed by, this is actually a very large setback that's owned and operated by Massachusetts DOT. The rear yard setback, which is only required at 10 feet, is 70 feet. That's a significant setback, providing distance and screening from the residences located along Fern Lane. The development calls for 86 parking spaces, all of which are provided. There's 26 spots underneath Building A and 14 under Building E. The wastewater will be treated by a fast septic system, which is designed and used in nitrogen-sensitive areas. The overall design flow for this project is under 10,000 gallons per day, which is less than the former allowed use or former use of 53 motel rooms and 170 seats, which was over almost 12,000 gallons per day. The proposed development actually generates less than half of the nitrogen of the former use. We have submitted traffic reports, both the traffic report that was completed in 2008, as well as a 2018 update. Cape Cod Commission traffic content report over the last decade also has indicated that the volume on Woods Hole Road has not increased. There's no material impact on the traffic by this development. We generate only 15% of the previous use, and our traffic studies indicate that there's safe stopping distances and sightlines, and the two curb cuts are set more than 570 feet apart. The staff report submitted by the planning board does make note of the sighting of Building E relative to the dome. And in that report, they refer to two comments by David Fixler and Bob Moore, who spoke at the zoning board last week. What the staff report doesn't mention is that both of those speakers are board members of the Dome at Woods Hole, Inc., a group that has sought to gain control of this property, which presents a fairly significant conflict of interest. What's not mentioned in that report are the comments of our historic specialist, Doug Kelleher of Absalon Associates, who was praised by both Bob Moore and David Fixler, or Michael Conley's comments. Michael was the chair of the Massachusetts Historical Commission for 15 years. Both stated that the sighting of the Building E relative to the dome is appropriate. Mr. Fixler also noted that he'd have significantly less concern if Building E was lower than the dome. But that is, in fact, the case. The dome is set 12 feet lower than, I'm sorry, the Building E is set 12 feet lower than the dome. There's a significant retaining wall to the rear of Building E, and Building E will in fact be not as high as the dome, which is not the English words I'm using, I'm looking to use here. There has not been a view of the dome from the west, and Building E will not alter that. I thought it was significant, I went on something quite as simple as Google Maps today and printed off a screenshot of the view approaching the site from the west, from Woods Hole Village. I'm gonna submit this momentarily, but you'll see that there's really no view at all of the dome above the existing motel buildings. Site plan review allows for the planning board to see comments from various boards, not stated in those regulations as the historical commission. We're not asking you to ignore the dome, but we do want you to look at the benefits of this project relative to its approval. Building E complies with the covenant plan, which came after significant negotiation with the community association. This plan includes the benefits of the affordable units on the site and seeking achievable uses for the dome, providing public access. This project is supported by the two director butters, Sands of Time Motel, the Veder family, as well as Beth Colt at the Treehouse Lodge. We stated at the ZBA, we think this is a good plan. We even think this is a great plan. It cannot and does not have to be perfect to everyone. This replaces a longstanding eyesore and will be a benefit to both the site and the community. There's been considerable thought and discussion over these plans. We believe this is a more than suitable development for the site and provides substantial benefits to the neighborhood and the town. I understand that we're likely not walking out of here with any decisions. So what we'd like to do is have a discussion. We'd like to answer questions that you might have. Would like to explore any ideas or concerns that the board might have. I, along with other members of the team, would welcome those questions in order to discuss this project, its benefits, and why we think it should grant approval. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Clower, Kevin. The Mass DOT owns that little slice of land there?
Yep, this is, this is considered state highway, and DOT owns the road layout.
Do they have any thoughts about its use, or are they leaving it alone?
They've left it alone.
Because that seems to be where most of the trees had been cut down there. Right in front of the dome.
There, there's pretty significant space between the dome and the lot line here as well.
Thank you.
I have a number of concerns, but the most immediate one, looking at the site plan, is twofold. One is, the reason the dome was picked there by Mr. Fuller was the expanding views over the harbor. And it looks like Building E is impinging on those views. And I think the question was only 18 feet between them. And I was curious whether the developer could consider rotating Building D to the left and Building E a little bit to the left, so it's more parallel with the roadway. That would provide enhanced views from the dome over the harbor.
So one. I'm happy to discuss it with my client, is the short answer to that.
And the other obvious thing to me is Building G and F are really put off on the end, almost like they're secondary to this entire development. May be appropriate if you consider putting the drainage field on the far end away from the homes and moving the Building G and F a little closer to the rest of the development.
Part of the rationale for that was, in fact, that Building F and G are intended to be retained as rentals. The units in Buildings A, B, C, D, and E will be sold as residential units. But more than that is that the other units will be age-restricted to 55-plus. The rentals will not be. And in terms of putting people in a situation where they think they're buying an age-restricted unit and there's a family living next door, that becomes not what was bargained for.
Stand by my comment.
Bob?
I want to echo what Paul said about Building E. I just wonder, because it does, there were some concerns in the report that I read about that kind of overwhelming dome, and I just wonder if that couldn't be moved over where Building C and B are and a little better arrangement of B, C, and D could be, could be made to.
I think the issue in doing that would be that you'd have much more of a visual presentation of the larger structure from the street. Right now, if you look at the renderings, what you're looking at here are Buildings, let me get this right here. Buildings B, C and B. And these are two-story buildings, relatively small and massing. Building E is a 13-unit building, two and a half stories high, which would be significantly larger in massing. So I think you'd be looking at a very different visual presentation of the project from the street view in flipping it in that manner. I did, I was attempting to address that concern because, you know, even David Fixler, who had spoken on behalf of the Dome at Woods Hole, did mention that if the building was lower than the dome and were not to tower over it, which is not the case in this situation, he'd have less concern about the overwhelming aspects of it. What he described as the overwhelming aspects of it. But given that it is set 12 feet lower and will be lower than the dome, I think that partly addresses that concern.
Pam? Even at that, it still overwhelms this dome. I think the town of Falmouth has this incredible historic, one-of-a-kind, I think, in the world of the actual wood structure. And it doesn't, I can't quite conceptualize 18 feet between that structure and a building and how anything could be constructed within that 18 feet. I actually measured my bedroom today, so I could actually see what 18 feet was and wondering how any equipment could even get in there without damaging the dome. I mean, we have a structure here that is unlike anything else. And I just don't quite understand that that building, even if it's lower, it's enormous compared to the size of this dome. So that's one comment. Another comment is, who winds up having the caretaking responsibility for that structure?
That will be part of the community, the condominium association's ongoing duties, but I do think that falls outside of the scope of the planning board's discussion.
Well, it's a concern to me because of the concern of the maintenance of that building. So so that's one question. I had a whole bunch of questions that actually people called and asked me to please ask you. But I agree with both Paul and Bob in terms of relocating the larger building over where two of the smaller buildings are, so that it doesn't overwhelm this historic structure. The other thing, as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, it seems to me that those are so segregated, and that's certainly not the intent of affordable housing, which is to be incorporated into a community. And this, to me, is, just flies in the face of that. And I understand with the children, but that's not to say that in one of these other buildings, it couldn't be two on one end and two on another end of the building. They don't have access, they're not gonna be running up and down halls, and it's just, to me, in 2019, it feels extremely insensitive, considering what we're working toward here. So it's just something for you to think about. John?
When the dome was originally built, it was for the purpose of being a restaurant, is that correct? So it probably had nice views looking out over the harbor.
It still has, will still have very nice views looking out over the harbor.
It still will have when it's re.
You'll be looking directly at Coast Guard Harbor to, towards the front of the building.
So if it gets approved and it gets reconstructed, what will it look like? Will it be the same geodesic shape? Like original material, then the new material, what the exterior, skin, what will it look like?
So I will let. So, I will let, our, our historic specialist isn't with us this evening. I will, I will defer to his comments on that, but it will be preserved in line with the recommendations of our structural engineer and our historic preservationist in terms of making sure that we comply with any applicable regulations of the Falmouth Historical Commission, as well as the Massachusetts Historical Commission. But the intent would be to essentially recreate the dome as you see it now, but in much better shape.
And instead of it being a restaurant, what will be the proposed use?
The intended use would be for artist studio space.
Artist studio space, could you kinda expound on that, please?
Sure. It's, it's a concept that we've been working on for some time. Dome at Woods Hole, Inc., a group who has sought some control over the site and sought to create an art center there. They were doing that for quite some time. We, after speaking with them, after speaking with members of the art community, determined that we could potentially make that into art studio space that would be available to members of the public, not just to the, not just to the condominium association, but available to the public, and open for showings, for events, for, there'd be a, within that addition located on the northeast side, there would be space for displays as something in terms of the history of the dome, the history of Buckminster Fuller. It would be a congregating place, but it would be a very low-impact, consistent use for artist studios.
So, when you speak of art, are you talking about like photography, or paintings, or music, or?
I think that's still a work in progress. I don't think we've limited ourselves to one medium over another, at this point.
And your, and your opinion, when it gets redone, it's gonna be beautiful like it was originally?
I certainly hope so.
And, and Building E will not block any views to the-
I don't think Building E is gonna block the views that, that it's being accused of blocking, so to speak. I think that there are still very sweeping views from the structure that will be available. I'm not gonna tell you that you're not gonna see Building E, but there are a number of view corridors that are still available that provide views that I would like to have.
And, it's kind of out of our purview, but is there gonna be a manager on-site for the, for the studio? Or will there be hours of operation?
We've been speaking with a, a nonprofit about potentially managing or running the facility. We're not far enough along to bring that to the forefront yet. There's been a number of discussions about how it would be managed. I imagine it would be hours of operation, it wouldn't be a twenty-four-hour operation. But there would be a management structure in place to oversee the day-to-day operations there.
Okay, and the four rental apartments for affordable housing, is that something that was mandated, mandated by the Cape Cod Commission, is it a voluntary?
Cape Cod Commission requires affordable housing, however, they don't require it on-site. The previous approval for the wise development did have the affordable housing all located offsite. In, in working with the community association, it was determined that there was a much more substantial benefit to having the affordable rentals located within Woods Hole Village, walking distance to the village or the Steamship Authority, or the Woods Hole Shenographic. So, we sought to keep those on-site. But the by, the zoning bylaw does not require the affordable housings, but the Cape Cod Commission decision does.
Are there gonna be two bedrooms, three bedrooms, one bedroom?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, and they'll be owned and managed by the developer or by the association?
By the developer.
I'll have some further questions later, but thank you very much.
Erika?
Thank you. I don't have the same reaction about the crowdedness of, to the dome. I, I do agree with the staff recommendation that it would be easier to picture if we had an elevation drawn to show the height differences, because the topography there, you know, there's a lot of, of changes in it. And I don't think that we can, particularly here in the picture that you have chosen, nice-looking trees, but hard to tell the relationship with the dome, so I wonder if we could see that elevation.
Well, this, the rendering was, was intended to show why I thought moving Building E to the street side would be more difficult. That's what I was trying to show with that.
And I think actually your comment that were that to happen, and you have a big building close to the street, you've really blocked the look of the site, and it changes the massing, so that it will be much less approachable and accessible, and less likely to look more like the village, which it does now, by putting the smaller buildings to the fore. I also want to comment on the use of the, the dome for artist studios. The, there's a need for artist studios in town, and I was kind of thrilled when I saw that. And I wonder, will they be rented to artists? How, how is that going to work, and will they be affordable rents?
So, I don't think there's been any discussion about what the rental cost might be, but I imagine they'll be affordable. But they will certainly be made available to and rented to artists.
Ah, Yarmouth has something like that, and it's very popular, because the artists teach out of them. So that they're able to make a living there from their studios, and it works really well. My, my concerns with it, first of all, I want to say I think it's a really good-looking project. When I was reading the staff report and discovered that, wow, the, the documents that we were looking at are ninety percent complete. And I, I wonder at that, where does that put us? And there are a lot of engineering comments that went along with that that need to be addressed. How does that fit the timeframe?
I'm gonna defer to the engineer, and, and I'll defer to the engineer for the response on this one. He's not the engineer.
I'm not. I'm Bob, I'm at co-counsel with my colleague Kevin Clower. And I just wanted to point out that, yes, there are many, many engineering comments, several pages of them. But they were sent to us at four forty-three on Friday afternoon. We haven't had an opportunity to go over them, but they are obviously something we need to go through, address, and make sure that each of the points that's raised by the engineering department are explained, or plans revised, or more information provided with regard to the drainage and the other issues that are, are raised.
Because I assume that our clock has started ticking on when we need to give, make a decision here. And can all that work be done within that timeframe, or?
If I may, Matt Costa, Cape and Islands Engineering. As Bob said, we just recently received the information. We have gone through it all. It will not result in any material changes to the plan. I believe everything's adequately sized. It's a matter of clarifying information and responding, which we plan to do within the next couple of weeks to have that worked out. So, we're, we're confident that it's not gonna result in any mater-, when I mean material changes, I mean significant changes.
So you're not expecting the roof lines to change, or any of the, the-
Engineer, with respect to engineering comments.
Ah, but then there are also comments about the plan itself, and the elevations perhaps not matching, fitting correctly, and that may be changing. Is that true?
I'm not quite sure I follow, Ms. Harris. I, I wasn't aware of a comment of that nature. I'm not saying it's not there, I just didn't catch it. But we'll, of course, go through our plans to make sure that the elevations are lined up appropriately.
Okay, and then one final comment. You've, you've received the staff comments. Yeah, and one of them dealt with the suitability of the design. I noticed in the photograph that was handed around that there's a gambled roof building directly across the street from this, actually. And the shingle style is, it's not prevalent yet, but it sure is spreading all over Falmouth, and certainly it's in Woods Hole. So I, I couldn't quite see that one.
We will be submitting to the historical commission. The, the front portion of this lot is within the historical commission. We are working through the preservation restriction right now with Massachusetts, with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and wanted to address that and have that resolved first. But we will need to apply and receive a certificate appropriateness, or modify the existing certificate of appropriateness from the historical commission.
Thank you.
So the suggestion of having a elevations plan that would show the elevation of each of the buildings across the property is a good one. So we will submit that. We'll also submit a plan that shows the view shed that's existing and, and proposed.
Kevin, I like that rendering from the street that showed Buildings C and B. Is it possible to have another type, the same type of rendering that shows Building E and the dome?
I don't see why not. We don't have, we don't have one that gives a good portrayal of the relation right now, so.
But I, I think that would be a good visual to have.
I think that's what Bob Ammon just said they were gonna produce.
Well, I think you were looking for drawn elev-, drawn elevations. I'm looking for a rendering that, from the road, like the one that was there.
Oh, okay.
So, so you get an image of what you, what it looks like when you're driving down the road.
We're happy to provide that.
Woods Hole Partners is, is obviously gonna maintain the zone, and I think that's a wonderful idea. But I'm a little curious about the effort being made to not only to repair the dome, bring it up to code, and put the skin on it and so forth. Is Woods Hole Partners prepared to make that kind of investment, to make this place usable again?
They don't have a choice.
Sorry?
They don't have a choice, in terms of the investment. It is-
The answer I'm looking for, though, you don't have a choice.
No, they, yes, the answer is yes. They, they are prepared, because it is a condition of the decision, both from the Cape Cod Commission, as well as Massachusetts Historical, that the dome be preserved and restored. And they, they knew that going in.
Has there been a structural integrity evaluation of the dome?
There has been a structural report completed, yes. It was submitted to the board two weeks ago, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take my crack at some comments. The dome, I know that the attached buildings are gonna be torn down, and then there's another addition onto it, and it looks to be two-story. Why is it two-story, what function does it serve?
First of all, I'd like to point out that there is a very large building attached to the dome already. It's the kitchen wing, had offices and laundry in it. And there's a two-story structure attached on the other side, which presently has had the bar in it, and stairs, stairs down. Those are both two-story structures that are actually connected to the dome. So the, and the project that was approved by all boards in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine had a, a two-and-a-half-story, hundred and forty thousand square feet foot building with forty-three units in a single building that was attached to the dome. The two-story building that's proposed is a rather modest building. About six hundred square feet, it's really very small. But it's two stories, because the first level is an entry level, the dome is up high, and it includes an elevator. So it's elevator access, which doesn't exist today, to get to the floor of the dome. There's still a series of pathways handicap accessible that are shown on the proposed site plan. But the portion of that building that starts at the floor level of the dome is only one story. It's below that, that it's another story, and it's to provide handicap access. Now that building, as Kevin said, is gonna have bathrooms, which don't exist, or toilets, anyway, that don't exist in the dome. It will have a stairway, and it will have an elevator. It'll have a small foyer area that can be used for limited exhibition space, and it will have some storage. All things that aren't in the dome itself. And the dome will provide a good natural lighting, as well as good artificial lighting for artist studios, or whatever other use the community wants to make. We think the artist studios is the right one to do, but it's been suggested could be so-called makerspace. It could be a different use. It is not intended as a money maker in any way. And there won't be a division of the interior of the dome, other than perhaps low separation between artist studios. There aren't gonna be any walls in it, it will be in this open structure with the artificial ceiling that's been put in there, removed, to take full advantage of all of that space. Now, the developer has hired some of the best people in the state. Doug Kelleher, whom you have in your files a report from with Epsilon for many years, a planner at the Mass Historical Commission, and Structures North, which is one of the leading engineering firms, which has done these studies, structural study that's in the file. The two thousand and eight decision of the Board of Appeals and the Cape Cod Commission all refer to protocol to be followed in doing the renovation of the dome by a very well-known architect in historic preservation and deacon marvel. It didn't have the specifics in any of those decisions exactly what would be done. But exactly what will be done will have to be approved by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It will be reviewed and monitored, I'm sure, by the Falmouth Historical Commission. It has to be further reviewed, approved by the Cape Cod Commission. Prior to construction, the Cape Cod Commission requires that there be a historic preservation agreement, a restriction, permanent, filed with and approved by Mass Historic. So we've hired the best people. They've been working on this project for a period of time. When we have approvals for it, then real detailed work will have to be done. The kind of detailed work that is particular to this unique building, but really, I don't think is part of your site plan review. And there's a lot of levels of protection that are, that are built into this, this approval. I hope that's helpful. I think I'd like to comment also on the funding. I'd like to comment, I'd like to comment on the funding issue, too. As stated in the two thousand and eight special permit decision, which specifically says that the maintenance of the dome will be an obligation of the, of the condominium association. And I think it even refers to a requirement that a preservation fund be funded with a contribution, whether it's one or two thousand dollars, I don't know what the right figure is, at the time of each sale of the condominium units. There will be thirty-nine market rate units. There'll be four other units, but they'll, those units, the developer will pay a smaller annual charge every month, because they're less valuable, and the charge is based on value. Thirty-nine fairly valuable condominium units with liens on each unit requiring the, a payment of monthly charges, which by the decisions will require that they include in their budget the maintenance of the dome. And sometimes people don't pay their monthly charges. And that's a lien on the unit, and they always get paid up when a unit is sold. I don't think there's any better mechanism to make sure that, unless somebody puts millions of dollars into escrow. There is, this is an excellent mechanism for, for assuring the maintenance of the dome. The developer will spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to put the dome in excellent condition, better than it's probably ever been, because it probably wasn't built intended to be a permanent structure, although it's lasted a long time. And it will be restored to the requirements of all of those informed bodies, and in good condition. And then turned over to the condominium association as part of the common elements, as part of the common property of the, of the association, subject to the requirements. I think it's a, I think it's as good a funding mechanism as anybody can come up with.
I've got a few more things, though, okay? And Bob, thank you, you're right, you went way beyond what we have under site plan and design review, but I think it helps to allay some concerns here. I, two, three, four, whatever, however many, have a problem with the rental units- with the rental units being stuck way out beyond. And I'm wondering about the possibility that they could be brought forward over the leaching field because there are two things that, well, if they can't for one reason or another, I can see that that leaching field should be preserved as an open field for recreation. I'm assuming we're going to have some fairly active seniors in here. And, you know, people mentioned pickleball, bocce, all kinds of things, so an open playing field there. But I really don't like the visual of the rentals. It almost gives too much of a visual of hired help off there in the distance, down there.
You're right about the leaching field. You know, it's the former location of the tennis court. It's where the leaching field works best. I think it's important to note that the property, I guess it's to the east. Maybe we could pull up the site plan. East of those two duplexes for the affordable housing, there's a 10-foot strip along here, which will never be developed because it goes along with this, this house. And on the other side of that is Woods Hole Oceanographics Campus. Their Village Hill Campus, but it's the area people don't think much about, and the topography is very rough. It's not likely to be developed along that line for a long time. So, what you actually have down there is a wooded, quiet area that those two affordable duplexes, we think, would actually be very nicely located. And they will be, continue to be owned by the developer. Mark Bogosian intends to, to own them until his kids own them. They're a different kind of housing than the rest of the property. They could have been located, the Cape Cod Commission agreed, off-site. They are not required by Falmouth zoning. No affordable housing requirement under the bylaw. They're there because of the Cape Cod Commission, in the project. And they're in that location because the community association agreed that they should be in walking distance from the village. Now, the people who live there were not going to be owners. They aren't buying into age-restricted housing. It is different. And in this case, this isn't a 40B where the regulations require integration of all of the units. It makes more sense to have them be there. And there will be loads of people who would like to live there, who threw probably a lottery process as required by the state housing inventory process. Will get a chance to live there. They will have the benefit of being in the condominium with the right to use any facilities that are available. The pickleball has been mentioned. And sometimes I think that the people who say, "Oh, they're going to be second-class citizens over there." The problem is with the people saying that. The people who are living there are not going to feel bad about it. And if, if I were living in the condominium units and felt that workforce housing was for second-class people, well, shame on me. The idea that that isn't going to be nice housing. It's going to be brand-new, good, affordable housing, walking distance from public transportation, lots of job opportunities, whether it will be people who live in Woods, work in Woods Hole or somewhere else, or work at all, maybe people who qualify for the housing, but, but who, who are aged or aren't workers. But the goal always was, to the extent possible, to utilize the local preference provisions that can be written into affordable housing. And that the idea was to create workforce housing in Woods Hole. And it's easy, without thinking about all these things, to say, "Oh, they're creating housing. They're putting it off and to separate it in the woods." I think that Mark Bogosian is going to be creating terrific housing that, as the owner of it, he will be able to maintain with a high degree of interest in keeping it terrific housing because it's part of his market-rate senior housing project. I've tried to express to you our feelings about what we're trying to do with the affordable housing and why it's on-site, and why it's in a good location on the site. I hope you'll agree.
Bob, will that leaching field be grassed over?
Yes, yes.
So, it's really, to look at, you're looking at a meadow.
Correct.
Is that right? So, the people who are driving in to go to their homes in the affordable housing are driving up a hill and then down a hill, past a meadow, to their homes.
Well, what you do have to realize is that there's a, there's a huge, a topographic change that's occurring in this area. That's why there's a guardrail here.
Yep.
So, I guess it might just uphill yesterday and then down the hill.
And then downhill to it.
Passing, passing the, the meadow to be created. This is a steep bank here, too. Going along here, you wouldn't actually see any of the motel on there. And the whole area around it is surrounded by, by woods.
So, were there to be children in those houses? That would be a play area.
I don't see why not.
I don't see why not either. I know when first I was looking at the plan, the first thing I noticed is, wow, they really discriminated against those people there. Then you started thinking about what it would really be like. And it's putting the much smaller buildings down away from the big development and giving them some privacy also. I think actually the developer is to be, and the Woods Hole Association for insisting on it, and Cape Cod Commission for giving a push to you, all to be commended for including the affordable housing, very much so, and for stepping up to pay for the rehab on the dome. That, to rehab the dome, a prior plan was, of course, to be a nonprofit and do fundraising for it. That would take years, whereas this is going to happen relatively soon at your expense. Thank you.
Bob?
I'd like to correct the record a bit. Mr. Clower, you said a structural study was done on that dome. I read a study several weeks ago, and if I remember correctly, the structural engineer came, looked at the dome, and said it looked okay. But he did not look at the members, did not go up in the structure itself, and recommended further studies be done. That was the purpose of my question.
For the record, Mark Bogosian, one of the partners in the project. We did have Structures North come down, just knowing we had to provide ladders with numerous people that were part of that team, and they did an extensive study. And it will be ongoing throughout the development phase to come up with all the details that are going to be required to make that not only come back to life, but be sustainable.
Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to go on the record of saying that I have no problem with the affordable units being down there. I, I think that's an advantage myself, to be away from the larger development area. You've got more space around you. So, I, I would not be insulted if I had to live there.
I'd like to add one other thing, and that is that our agreement, our covenant with the Woods Hole Community Association provides that we cannot occupy more than five units in the, of market rate units before the affordable rentals are completed and rented.
Right.
So, those will, will be constructed at the same time as the duplexes are intended. That is, the B, C, and D would be constructed, to make sure that those are done.
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying that, what it was going to be like. A question, if there are children living there, which I would assume and hope they would be, do they have to come all the way up and down to the road to get a school bus?
In all likelihood, yes.
And how long a distance is that?
We can get you that distance. I don't know the exact number. I know my son's bus stop is a quarter mile from the house.
A quarter mile?
From, from my house.
And kids can walk a mile to a bus stop?
I used to do it uphill both ways.
Walk a mile up and then mile back up the same way?
Yeah. And I used to have to walk it backwards.
Right.
In the snow.
Isn't, isn't there a community school close by, is the Woods Hole?
There, there is a community preschool located on Harbor Hill Road.
The other, my other question is, within the ownership of the condominium, it's owned then privately by this condominium complex. How is that made available, the dome, to the public?
So, we're working, as I mentioned, we're working with a nonprofit to talk about managing the, the access and day-to-day management of the dome. If not, it could be a working group within the condominium association that would manage that. There are any number of, of ways that that could be made available. And we're still work, kind of working through that process.
Do you have any idea, I'm, I'm spatially impaired, so how many studios could be in that building?
Well, the plans that are submitted show a, depict seven units. Could it be eight? Will they be shared by people who, you know, often artist space is operated as a collaborative? People may have a place to store their art supplies. And at different times, different people may be using studio space. Exactly how it operates is way beyond site plan review.
I know.
And it's a work in progress. We will be talking more with the Woods Hole Community Association about any input they would, would want to have, towards it. We really don't have to have the answer to all of those detailed questions to be able to move forward with a site plan review and, and others.
John, do you have anything else? You said you might have other things.
Not, not, I just want to mention that I also don't have a problem with where the four units are proposed to be. In fact, I think it's a good idea that they're not next to the people that are 55 and older, that community. And I didn't see on the plans, I didn't have a chance to look at the, at the plans, but are those units going to have, those four units going to have a garage for each apartment? A built-in garage? Okay, thank you.
I apologize for letting that digression happen, but I did it almost purposely, thinking it might help for a greater understanding of the people who are here of this development. So, if anybody's miffed by this digression, I apologize. Now, I want to go to people out here. Okay, let's start with the left hand up there with the black sleeve. You, yes, next to Barbara.
Hi, my name's Mike Chalino. I actually live in West Newton. Mark and I have been friends for about 10 years. And I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I thought I might have some perspective on the 18-feet thing because I actually took the photos there, got to spend a whole morning at the, at the site. And from the street, there's a, there's a, there's a huge grating up. It sits on a hill and with a lot of land out in front. And, you know, Fuller really did, whoever chose like where that was, it's, it's so well, it's majestic. The dome, it just sits, it just sits on that hill. It was a view of, of the water, and you don't even look behind you. In fact, if you did look behind you, it does, it kind of goes back. You should, if you, if you're concerned about the 18-feet, you should go to the site because it, you know, it, it's so majestic that I actually had to go back in the time because I didn't, I didn't see that the, some of the buildings that were, you know, down the hill and to the right. You know, I had to go back and photograph them again. So, I guess that's my, my only point, you know, it's, having spent so much time there, I have no concern about the 18-feet because of, of how the dome is situated on that property.
It has pride of place, you're saying, by virtue of the?
Yeah, it's just, it just, it, it sits there in, you know, everything, you know, looking at the plans, all the buildings are sort of behind it, but you don't even look, you know, you're just focused on what's right in front of you, you know?
Thank you. Barbara?
I'm Barbara Wayand. I'm a board member of Falmouth Preservation Alliance. I attended the ZBA meeting last week. And I just wanted to share with you a couple of comments and concerns that we have as an organization that cares very much about preservation of historic character of all the villages of Falmouth. There's nothing homogeneous about saying that. In my capacity as a board member, I spent over a year attending meetings held by the Planning Board Subcommittee called the Local Comprehensive Plan, folks who diligently plowed through innumerable topics and produced a plan that's well worth examination. And it's online, of course, on the Planning Board webpage. The reason I bring that work up is that it was really eye-opening to see what's happening now in terms of approaches to developments. Instead of taking a kind of traditional density approach, 40%, 60%, et cetera, based on, on that. In addition, if you will, it, there is a phenomenon called form-based architecture. And form-based architecture, if I can put it in layperson's terms here, is, pays attention to the scale of buildings that are proposed, the roof lines, architectural features, the point being that any development that's going into an established area then has an opportunity to blend and have a sense of community character moved forward as opposed to something that gets dropped in. I'd also like to mention that Corey Pacheco, our Assistant Town Planner, knows a heck of a lot more about this than I do, even after a year or so. I would urge you to call him. He's going to love me for that. But it's a really vital, progressive way of looking at future planning. And it, with that point about form-based architecture, goes a concern that I have certainly in looking at the architecture there, with due deference to Charlotte's point about shingle-style architecture going up all over Falmouth. There is no Falmouth, there are eight villages. And I'm hoping that some of the Woods Hole residents tonight speak to what they believe the character of the village is because what I see there is what I would call suburban shingle. That, and it, there's nothing like it, especially with respect to the size of that development anywhere in Woods Hole. If you look at the historic origins of Woods Hole and a, a lot of the quirky and fun and small, overall scaled, architecture of the village, which this is contiguous to, it, this to me just is like, whoa, something got dropped in. So, it's kind of antithetical to the progressive approach of form-based architecture. I'd love to hear at some juncture more detail about the commitment to the restoration of the dome. I appreciate the developer's point of view and the, and the lawyer's point of view regarding this is not within the scope of the site plan. But I, I feel all kinds of tensions between a condo association managing an artistic community, and then there is an anonymous, a nonprofit which may manage this. Be aware that if, if a preservation restriction is issued to a nonprofit, they hold responsibility for... restriction is issued to a nonprofit, they hold responsibility for the maintenance and for annual reviews of the conditions, et cetera. So it really behooves us to be concerned about this. The dome, per Pam's, Pamela's point of view, uh, earlier, this was the first dome that Buckminster Fuller did. His students, in fact, built it. There's a tremendous amount of, um, in-situ history that goes with, with that building, that we ought to be very, very proud of. And, uh, so I, I would like to know at one point, I'm putting this out as a question, at what point will we hear in the whole petition, how the dome itself is going to be preserved in detail and then maintained? Because I hear lots of conflict about the condo association later, five years hence deciding that, you know, that thousand dollars that we get dinged per year, uh, for the maintenance of the dome, and then what happens? And who's holding the preservation restriction? There's lots of ambiguity there that I would really like to see cleared up. So those are the things I would like to put in front of you, some of which have a direct bearing on design review. Thanks.
Bob, you wanted to make a comment in response?
Uh, the, the preservation restriction has to be approved by the Cape Cod Commission, by their decision, which is in effect now. It has to be approved because it's, uh, it has to be approved by the state. Um, and the Mass Historical Commission is the agency that does that. Um, we would have no objection to a condition of the Falmouth Historical Commission requiring that they approve the ma, the preservation restriction. And we have no objection to the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, having to approve the preservation restriction. But I don't believe that the Planning Board should, should be a party to that, uh, preservation restriction. Again, it goes back to, to detail that is, uh, not part of your purview. Um, we have a covenant on record at the Registry of Deeds with the Community Association that has been amended, and it provides that we have to, uh, work with them and seek, uh, public access. But one thing to remember is that views from the dome are not part of the purview of the, of, uh, the Planning Board, nor are they part of the purview of the Historical Commission. It's views of the dome from the public way that is regulated. And while we've agreed to provide public access and will provide public access, I can't tell you that it's going to be any particular number of hours a day. Depends on what the community, the overall community wants. Does the Woods Hole Historical Collection, Woods Hole's historical museum, do they want to, to have tours on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, a daily basis? I don't know what the demand will be. Will there be somebody who's resident that is, I mean, has an office in that small building at the dome, who's there all the time helping to make the place run? I don't know that either. Depends on whether the s, whole building is leased to an organization to operate those studios and make tours, or whether it works out that the condominium association has a, a board that makes sure that these things are done and that there's public access to the extent the community, um, wants it. But these aren't site plan review, um, issues. Whether there's public access at all to the dome isn't a site plan review issue. We've pledged, we've agreed in a recorded document to work with the Community Association to do that. Where are we now? We have a building that's been abandoned for the last fifteen years. It's in terrible condition, surrounded by dangerous eyesore. And along comes a developer who's willing to take this on, and I don't know whether the figure is five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars. He's going to put into the dome to restore it. Let's not miss the opportunity to see what's going on here and that we have a solution to a community problem. I just can't give you all the details of what will happen inside it and how many hours a day it will be open and how it will be managed. Thanks.
I probably, may I make a statement first, but you can come on up, because I'm recognizing you now. Uh, Bob keeps mentioning this is not under the purview of site plan review. We also do design review. So I'm going to tell you, our purview is, and we look at things that design features intended to integrate the proposed new development into the existing landscape, to enhance aesthetic assets and to screen objectionable features from neighbors. Design features shall include but not be limited to site planning, building placement, building size, design compatibility, exterior appearance, construction materials and finishes, parking and roadways, landscaping and site grading, building entrance and exit placement. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody out here as to what we're looking at. And I have given this a little bit more, not a lot, more latitude, but it has to do with the, how it will be financially supported principally and more about how it will be used, because that feeds into decisions we must make as well. So thank you, sir. Come up.
Hi, I'm Michael Goldring, forty-four Fern Lane, the road that goes behind the development. I'm the closest to butter to the dome and to the parking lot that's currently there. Um, and as you know, this, uh, property has been in development for, uh, at least eleven years. So, um, I have a concern about, you know, getting to the end of it so that the plans can be made and the, and the, the building can take place. And I'm, I'm hoping to live long enough to see that happen. I'm kind of running out of years at this point. So, uh, um, uh, I, one concern that I have is, um, the duration of the construction. And how many years will it take? And will it be done in phases? Because I'm the only year-round resident there, so I'm going to have to live through the whole, everything that's going to be done there. So that's a concern, is how long is it going to take? Also, no one has mentioned Building A. Building A is the most massive building of the whole lot, and it's the one that I'm going to be looking at. So, um, I have, I have asked for, um, um, conditions from the ZBA that I have discussed with Mr. Bogosian, and I expect that they will be, uh, included in any permit granted. Um, and, um, uh, and in regards to the rest of Fern Lane, I think I should speak up a little bit for the other owners, none of whom are here and all of whom are concerned, but, and are seasonal residents, because what they have behind them now is woods. Those are the woods of Woods Hole. And the, the, uh, the septic field and the other construction will require the woods to be removed. So, as you can imagine, they're not very happy about that, having the woods gone, but it's part of the plan. Uh, and, and I would just like, if possibly someone could explain to me now, I think it's a fairly short answer question, and it may be one that I've, uh, has been explained to me, but could it be done again as to why the, uh, the, the, um, the development cannot be connected to the, the, the municipal sewer? And why does it have to have onsite, uh, for forty-three residents, septic system in land that Woods Hole has very little land left to put things? And that's a pretty big thing to put within the watershed of Eel Pond, which is where the, the land contours down to. So can anybody sort of answer that question from the planning, uh, area?
That's really not our department to answer, but I don't know if anybody's?
The simple answer is it's a forced main.
Okay.
So you can't.
Can't just plug into it?
You just can't plug into it. And that's all I know about.
Well, that doesn't really make me understand, but, um...
I think the applicant's prepared to have that discussion about why municipal versus onsite.
We have a, we have sewer districts, and they are regulated by federal law and, as well as by the state, and it can't be expanded significantly. Uh, you just can't go add, more acreage to it. Um, the selectmen do have the authority to allow, um, or used to, to add some extension of this. For instance, the Flying Bridge Restaurant wasn't on it. They were able to extend a sewer line to, to meet that. But it's extremely limited. And it's actually a, a good distance from Woods Hole Village where the sewer is now to the site. Believe me, if Mark Bogosian could connect to the sewer, he would love to do that. He would save a massive amount of money probably. Um, it'd be, it'd be better. But we don't think it's possible. Um, I'm sure that the town can get a better answer than I've given you, which wasn't a very good answer, but, um, difficult to do. Thank you. And Mark has a couple of other responses to help out, Mr. Goldring.
I've made it a point to get involved with the residents of Fern Lane. So, we've met at his house a few times, discussed the plans. And in our discussions, we've been able to show there's a very large area of the, where our limit of work is keeping a huge portion of the trees where possible against Fern Lane. And where the septic is going is where the tenants' courts, a paved surface is today. So we did look at the whole site as a whole and also make sure that specific needs were addressed on the landscape plan. For example, some of the concerns would be addressed that not only are on the plan, but we are absolutely willing to have conditioned to make it so our one year-round resident can have a, a good experience throughout construction. And as far as the timeline, we want to get started as soon as possible. And we understand that this is a large project, but we have the resources and the ability to put a lot of people and a lot of local people to work to get this project constructed and a lot more nice residents down in Woods Hole.
So it just, I was reminded by the, um, responses to the pri, the prior agenda item with the Butters, uh, asking for high fences and for vegetation. I have gone over the, um, vegetation with, uh, with Mark, and, uh, I am anticipating, um, a satisfactory, landscaping job. But I also might like to just retain the idea of a fence, if it is necessary, to afford privacy for me, uh, in regards to a building that's going to be three stories high and going to have windows, you know, that I, that can see my house and I can see them, which right now I have sky. I have sun in the afternoon, in the winter. In the summer, I have a complete natural screen that nobody has ever landscaped, but it works. But that will be gone. So I'm expecting a, a, a replacement of the privacy and the, uh, view in regards to something nice to look at, um, between me and the project.
Thank you.
I could just add to that. You know, there is a seventy-foot setback from the rear of the Fern Lane properties to that big building, whereas in a residential zone, it would be a ten-foot setback where you could have a house, two-and-a-half-story house. Um, and it, and in this district, it's, uh, is it twenty feet or ten feet? So instead of a seventy-foot set, uh, ten-foot setback, there's seventy-foot setback. Uh, that large building, seventy feet back, will be much higher than, um, Mr. Goldring's house, so I don't think fencing is going to be the solution. Um, and I also want to point out, I don't think Kevin said it earlier, that the, um, lot coverage, first of all, the building lot coverage is only about twenty percent. In a business redevelopment, uh, higher percentages, a much higher percentage is allowed. It's thirty-five percent, I think. And in a business redevelopment district, total lot coverage of sixty percent is allowed. And by agreement with the Woods Hole Community Association, we have kept it at forty percent. Forty percent versus what town meeting allowed was sixty percent. So in terms of maintaining green space, uh, limiting the parking, paving, and structures, um, this is not a intense development compared to what's allowed.
If I may real quick, I just want to clarify, uh, the limit of work areas. Um, everything in this green right here is not going to be touched. We're going to have, uh, all the board members, uh, SHE 101 is our demolition plan. It shows the limit of work line that will be staked on there. Uh, and that follows this green line, uh, that's on, uh, the landscape plan. That, that area is not going to be touched. Um, with regard to the septic system, I don't want to get off topic, just one quick point is that the, uh, previous hotel and restaurant had a combined flow of somewhere over twelve thousand gallons a day. Our proposed flow is under ten thousand gallons a day. Um, the, the previous use had no innovative treatment at all. We will have, uh, innovative alternative treatment for nitrogen removal. So there will be a significant reduction in wastewater flow and a very significant reduction in, in total nitrogen, uh, discharge. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes? Yes.
George Woodwell, I'm a resident, have been for a long time. The subject, pardon me. The subject is the dome. I represent the Dome Incorporated. How about that? And my vision for the dome would be Highfield Hall and the grounds around it. A great marvelous park and a public ins, public interest institute for everyone. This land on the top of this hill is of great public interest. It's of private interest, obviously, because it's possible to sell land and houses and build houses and make money. Uh, but it's also some of the lost open land in the village. The village has a dearth of public interest land. No parks. Here we could have a park. It doesn't have to be the full five acres, but it could certainly be two or three acres. And the dome, developed as discussed here, uh, looks as though it should have programs that will exude from the dome and take up space outside. I would be astonished if it didn't. I also know that the old dome required these two buildings that Bob described, kitchen and other facilities. And it would not be a surprise to find that the new dome, however it's managed and for whatever purpose, will need those kinds of outside buildings. Make space for them. Think about them now. Lay out two or three acres that could be developed as had the acres around Highfield have been developed. And they are, they will be a flaming glorious part of the village of Woods Hole, which needs that sort of thing. So I urge you to think about it. That's a public service value. This land is of public value, and public values like that are regularly managed by government. Government sometimes buys into them, pays for them, and develops them. There's no reason that the government here, the town, could not afford to acquire the land, the dome, and see to its development in the public interest, its redevelopment. All of that's possible, and it should be being thought about. And it's true, those who came here just now and said that the buildings are not characteristic of Woods Hole. They are characteristic of big developments. Do we need another hundred residents? Do we need another 100 residents in Woods Hole at the moment with the expansion of the Steamship Authority? They've doubled their capacity this year, they've raised it by 50%. And the expansion of the other activities in Woods Hole? I think not. I don't think that adding another 100 vehicles to the traffic problems of Woods Hole is a good thing. So let's think about it. Perhaps this could be developed on a less grandiose scale, less intensive, farther away from the dome, which does need its space. Thank you.
Please, please stop. No, the clapping, that was totally inappropriate. I'm sorry. We have not been holding to the limit because we're okay within our time right now. We cannot go any later than 10 o'clock without a vote of the board. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone on the board. My name's Bob Moore. I don't live here, I live in Rhode Island. I spend a lot of time in Woods Hole though, so I feel like I kind of belong at this meeting. I don't want to be at this meeting. I'm going to try to tell you a little bit of what I said at the ZBA on Thursday, which is that I don't want to be here because I don't like confrontation. I'd rather be here in support of a project than challenging it. We've worked, I'm on the board of the Dome at Woods Hole. We've been trying to work with Mark, who's, you know, given us his time over the last year and a half to make something happen. And I kind of, I feel like in this room, there's energy for something or against something. And I really want to just make a pitch to you, hopefully in two minutes, for a project that's good for the village, that I think everybody could get behind. And I do want to take a little bit of time to dispute a couple of things from Kevin's, that Kevin said, because he mentioned my name. I do have a dispute with this plan, principally because of Building E. Building E is here on the plan. It sits over on top of a much smaller building that's existing. You can see it from the road today. That building, when the dome was built in 54, it had a clear skin, right? Clear Mylar skin, first time it was ever put on a dome of that size, a building of that size at all. So the result was a dining room in a restaurant that was unlike any other building on earth. The point of which was to have a connection between us as humans, the earth, the sky, and the water. So you're there under this clear blue sky, night sky perhaps. You have a 360-degree view of the whole sky above you. You have sweeping views down to the village, and we'll talk about the view shed, hopefully, all the way down to the village, all the way across Little Harbor, Vineyard Sound beyond. That was the view in 1954. Over time, things happened, vegetation grew up, but most of the view is still there. The building that I think it was Kevin who mentioned is right here, that does obscure some of the view coming from the village. It's true. If you look from, if you come around the corner, you come out of the steamship or something and you're coming up Woods Hole, you look up the hill, it's hard to see the dome because it's white. And it often blends in with the sky and there's a lot of trees around it. But you can see the dome over the roof of that building. That building's a two-story building with a flat roof, relatively low floor-to-floor. Its floor height is at 65 feet, I think, above sea level. The dome's height is about 79 feet. The floor of the dome is about 79 feet above sea level. Tell me if I'm wrong. I think I'm right. Okay? And so the whole level of that garden is about 65 feet above sea level. This building E, the finished floor, not the basement, which is subgrade, but the finished floor is 66, which is 13 feet below the floor level of the dome, which means that a three-story building will block the view. So that, I think that's the 13 feet he mentioned. So if we were to do a section, and I like your idea, Ms. Harris, of having an elevation view that shows us exactly where, what the heights are, I would encourage you to ask for a section. Because if there were a section coming up Woods Hole Road right through there, you'd see the height of that building, the height of the floor, the height of the roof, the height of the floor of the dome, the height of the dome, we'd see it. And I think what I want to communicate by arguing for that is that the spirit that made the dome, when Fuller came to build the dome, he came to Falmouth, right? He didn't come anywhere else in the world. And he did, that's what he did. He traveled all over the world and built things everywhere. He didn't build it at the Aspen Design Festival, he didn't build it in Boston at the MIT campus or in New York. He built in Falmouth, and that's something we should really be proud of. Because that thing is one of a kind. It's the oldest dome that Fuller ever built. The second one to be built, the first one burned down tragically. And so it's the oldest thing that he ever did. And he inspired all of these people to come here and build it. And since I've done a lot of research on the dome, I spent a lot of time over the last couple of years researching it, interviewing people who built it, who are now very aged, writing papers and publishing them. And what these people say is the impact that that experience had on their life, their experience in Woods Hole, changed them and put them on a path for creating a world that was more sustainable, more human-oriented, better. And I think that cultural resource that resides in that dome is something that Falmouth should really be proud of. It should revere it, respect it, and protect it frankly. So when it comes to the historic significance of the dome, it's totally clear. And as he said, he intends to preserve it, and that I'm happy about. But the historic significance goes beyond the kind of fact that it was built by this person in this time and it's this old. It connects to its site itself. So the view shed is important. You had a view, sweeping view, that goes all the way down to the village, which will be blocked. I don't think it makes any sense to argue against that. The last thing about that building E is that it, the elevation that's been submitted by them for that side of the building is called rear elevation. It's because it's the backside of the building. The front is on the other side, where you go in and you go up your elevator and you go to your nice apartment. That's the backside. It sits 13 feet below the floor of the dome. Then the slope comes up several feet, and then goes over several feet, then there's a retaining wall, and then it goes up to the dome. It's a complex building built into the hill, and it doesn't face the dome. If you're going to name your development after the dome, and I'm happy that that's going to happen, that the dome has respect in the town of Falmouth for somebody to propose that. But if you're going to do that, you need to make a site plan that puts the dome in a kind of position that gives it, that honors the legacy that it has. So that's my argument that I want to put forth. Last thing I want to say is that I am on the board of the Dome of Woods Hole. We formed as a community group to advocate for the preservation of that building. I've never wanted to control the whole property myself. I've never wanted anything like that. So Kevin mentioned that, I don't think it's fair for, it certainly doesn't describe me. And my interest, as I always say in every meeting I've had with them, is that I'm concerned about the dome and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Come up, please, to the microphone. You said it just right, it's been said very many different ways.
Nothing short of intense and command the respect of all of us in the room. And the other thing is, having served on many commissions and boards myself.
We need your name.
You're going to get it in one second, Madam Chairwoman, and that is you to be thanked for the time you devote to this effort. On the first count, I just want to say, my name is Michael Conley and I live at 87 Gunning Point. My wife and I chose that particular address and that location so that we would be close to Woods Hole, which we consider to be our village. And I don't mean to take that away from anyone else here in the room. It's our village, it's everyone's village. And within the context of that, you know, I'm there virtually every day, whether it's to go to the post office to pick up the mail, or whether it's to go down and have lunch or dinner, or whether it's to attend a meeting or to go to the firehouse as a member of the Woods Hole Community Association, and so on and so on. So there's a stake there. I am going to say that, you know, I've sort of drifted from my formal remarks, which I like to open up with the fact that the old quote of "say nothing and be thought a fool, speak and remove all doubt." And in that particular context, I must speak, because as part of the introduction, I want to point out that I see myself not only as a neighbor, but I also see myself in terms of having a role of some expertise. And that was, in a prior life, I was the Massachusetts Secretary of State for 16 years. And in that capacity, I chaired the Massachusetts Historical Commission from 1979 to 1995. I oversaw hundreds and reviewed hundreds of historical projects in the Commonwealth, everywhere from Falmouth to Provincetown to Williamstown to Springfield and back to Boston. And in that particular context, this particular project really concerns me in terms of when I, when my wife and I arrived in the scene, we've been homeowners who fundamentally summered here for the last 13 summers. That was the role. We made the final move, we moved from Boston to Gunning Point over 18 months ago, June of 2017. And immediately, I was struck by the fact that we had a major project afoot down in Woods Hole. And it wasn't just one. We had the Steamship Authority, we had HOE, everybody was on board. And if you're real in a community, you're a part of the community, you get involved, you join the organizations, and you take positions when you feel it's necessary to do so. I would point out, I opposed what HOE was trying to do in terms of paving over green space and fundamentally trying to turn Woods Hole into a parking lot. And at the same time, I was assessing the project that the Steamship Authority was doing, and I will defer to Nat Trumbo, who works day and night to make certain that things are done right. And within that particular context, I came to one decision fundamentally about three weeks to a month ago, and that is, I am going to support this project as is. And that means that, well, we'll tweak it if it needs to be tweaked or changed. But I want you to know that as chairman of the Historical Commission, I've seen these fights take place. And what happens is that good projects go down, and then what happens is developers and others say, "Well, we're going to go to the course of last resort," and that is a 40B project. And I don't even like mentioning that. I feel it's so sad that I have to raise that tonight, but it's there. I do want to take issue. George and Barbara, I'm sure they're good people, no question about good character and all that, but I do want to raise a point in terms of, first of all, with respect to the, the one thing that really turned me around was the team that Mr. Bogosian put together. From top to bottom, I think Ahmet and Klauer are as good lawyers as you're going to find. But more pointedly, in terms of what I know, Doug Kelleher as the Historic Preservation Analyst, coupled with John Watney from Structures North, you couldn't have a better team. These guys are not yes-men, they're not puppets, they're not rubber stamps. These guys will tell you in a second, if you're a developer, you've got to do it this way. And the way you have to do it, because I'm going to read from a letter here, you have to go to the National Park Service, who established the qualifications for historic preservation professionals. And each member of the team that's a part of this apply the Secretary of the Interior, federal standards, as it goes to the rehabilitation of historic properties. That's what we're talking about, is the rehab of these properties. And in that particular context, you've got this combination of factors. And that was, when I found out that Mr. Bogosian had hired Kelleher and Kelleher in turn hired Watney, my thing was, this thing will be done right. And we can, you know, stand here and demand that it be, every detail be worked out with respect to the dome at this point in time. I've walked the property, I've seen it. This, they have arrived in the nick of time. That's Structures under severe distress. It's time that we got to the process of saving it and stabilizing it in the original instant and then restoring it to its original beauty, which Bob Moore referred to. That's the process. I can't concern myself with the 18-foot separation. I can't concern myself with the four units of affordable housing. It's the idea of saving the dome. Will there be views of Little Harbor? I trust there will. But, you know, this is the fact in terms of, if this project fails after the Wise Living Project had failed before, then what comes next? What is it, Katie by the door? Is that the phrase? Katie by the door. You'll be looking at, if, I don't know if it'll be Mr. Bogosian, you'll be looking at another developer. There'll be 80 units minimum on that site. Density, traffic, everything will change. And what you will have in the alternative is you will gain, and it's a good point with respect to affordable housing, you'll gain 16, maybe 20, units of affordable housing in the process, instead of just four. But, you know, I sit here and I listen, and I have to tell you, I get a little emotional and I apologize. I want to say that this was a whole lot less confrontational than the ZB was, ZBA was last Thursday night. But again, I just feel compelled to speak and I just hope that this board, I, God, for this project to fail would be tragic. And perhaps it needs to be tweaked here or there. But five different agencies, Cape Cod Commission, ZBA, Planning Board, Mass Historical, Falmouth Historical. The project goes down, you flush beaucoup millions of dollars down the toilet. And that would be wrong, it would be terribly wrong. They've been at this for two years. I first became aware of it roughly 18, 19 months ago. I've followed it. This thing should get the seal of approval and everyone involved should be applauded for the efforts. And that's not in any way to undermine Nicole Goldman or anyone else in this room. They've worked hard, but this thing's, it just deserves to be passed and be passed unanimously. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure what the purview was for that, but my name is Jonathan Goldman. I live at 12 Sydney Street in Woods Hole. I just want to read you some of my notes from today. "It's not a matter of whether the removal of the existing deteriorating nautilus and the preservation, restoration, and repurposing of the adjacent geodesic dome should take place." That's a given. Everybody knows that it's an eyesore. Whoever takes it down, whoever has remediating funds to take it down, whoever has the plans to take it down will. Once all these boards agree and the money is assured, it's fait accompli. In everything that I've heard in these last two board meetings, there's a lot of missing parts. And I understand this is a process. This is a process that takes a while. I know, because we've been doing this for two and a half years, trying to cobble together a community-based organization, a community-based idea of what this jewel could be. So it's important that this critically important part of our architectural history, like other architecturally significant structures, even within the view shed of the dome, such as Elmsley and Purcell's classic arts and crafts airplane house, is renewed and developed with a whole community in mind, not just those that can afford it, or those that could be ostracized or put over to the side, however you want to see that. The current owners' plans, both as suggested and as rendered, exhibit an expedience based on maximizing the financial potential of the site, which as a former business owner, I understand. But for this particular place, almost a sacred place in the village, I think the potential for this site, which we feel as presently constituted- I think the potential for this site, which we feel as presently constituted, is achieved at the expense of what could be an optimal setting and a plan for repurposing of the dome to serve the needs for local artists' workspaces. Now, I don't know if you know who I am, but I am an artist. That has been my profession my whole professional life. I've had artist studios in many places. What I see behind me for the layout for that, not only is unworkable, but it's, it, there are parts of it that are seemingly so unconnected to any reality that any artist that I know of wouldn't want to have anything to do with, okay? Part of that is because there's no, there's no personal space. That's not, when we had tried to do a push to try to develop that specific space and to honor its integrity and its history, was, was more about using the whole space for the public as a venue for all the arts and even crossover into the sciences. Because we believe strongly that creativity is held in both of those fields. And we are unique. As Bob has, Bob Moore mentioned, we are unique in the fact that Fuller, at the request of another modernist, Gunnar Peterson, would come here and fix up a restaurant for his adjacent facility. I think you guys are in a very unique position as board members. Not just to review an architect or engineer's plans for compliance with setbacks, et cetera, or to ensure compliance with codes and regulations. Your charge could be about planning, thinking about how this critical property can help the town. What the responsibilities are for the town in the important role of preservation and enhancement of culturally significant places, like Ms. Wyland said, which I really appreciate. When I do have grandchildren, it hasn't happened yet, but I expect it at some point, I hope to avoid them asking, "You knew and you did nothing." My daughter is a PhD student in art history, my son is a graphic designer. My wife is an arts administrator and has, has worked in many different art organizations, run them, okay? I understand concretely about how generation after generation, these traits are passed on. And I'm hope, and, which means that I'm sure they will know, my grandchildren, that is, will know who Buckminster Fuller was. Because like Bob pointed out, he was a guiding light. He was our Leonardo da Vinci, okay? That's just a fact. He talked about large-scale things, like covering, things that were not possible, covering Manhattan in a dome. But he has also been given the moniker of the Buckminster Fullereen, the tiniest C-sixty particle, which is named after him. This is the kind of world ramifications that this man has. Everywhere where there are people who have studied architecture, who understand it and appreciate it, see him as this guiding light. If you go to Copley Square, there is a three, there are three major buildings that face each other. There is McKim Eden White's Boston Public Library, which was modeled on the Bibliothèque Saint Genevieve. There is the Trinity Church, and there is Iam Pei and Henry Cobb's Hancock Tower, thank you. The Hancock Tower is a reflection of all of that architectural history. That is the power that happens of design, of unique American influence on how we deal with one of the three major things in life, food, clothing, and shelter, which was the motivating factor for Fuller, which is why he came up with the dome in the first place. He wanted inexpensive for everybody. He wanted to make a simple structure that could be easily reproduced, easily moved, and easily constructed. And today, it stands for more than just the physical nature of a bunch of Douglas fir cut up and put into triangles and rhomboids that are under tension. It's far more than that. It is a symbol. It is a symbol which I think you all, by your very intelligent questions tonight, understand. And so my, my last, I just want to say, my last thing is, I think it's time, as George has mentioned, for the town of Falmouth to consider a role not unlike what it did for Highfield Hall, where the town saw the historic and cultural value of the site and with a vision to restore it as an articulation of the architectural gem it was conceived as, to be taken as the serious cultural asset for the town and the region. People will come to see this at a point when it is developed. We wanted to be able to think about it in terms of an international, which is typical for these things, an international competition for architecture, where people from all over the world would be able to give their inputs. And this is guided in part by our board. And some of the people on our board are, they, you know, have run the Buckminster Fuller Institute. We have his daughter, who is ninety-one, who has consulted with us all along this project. We are the people who know this stuff. We know the artistic side of it, what works and what doesn't work. I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, but I don't know of other artists who are desperate for artists' workspace. That may be the case, and maybe I just don't know as many people as I think I know. But I know many of the artists in the area, and they, they, they are starving for a venue. We don't have a space to show contemporary art. That's what our original pitch was. So, I, I appreciate you giving me the time. A fifty-four-foot diameter space presents a rare opportunity. I don't think, at this point, after ten years, there's a rush. So let's figure out all those little things. Let's present a full case, and let's do it in a unified, non-derogatory way. One that is collaborative. Collaboration is hard work. There's just no two ways around that. But let's try.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to ask questions or make any comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Max Frye, I live at Nineteen High Street, Woods Hole. I just have practical questions, I cannot even go to the dome thing, I don't know hardly anything about it. And I think others are well, more well-qualified to talk about that. I just have a couple of questions. Why fifty-five? Why are you making a rule that only people fifty-five can live there? All due respect, Woods Hole has a pretty large population of older people. Be nice to have some young people there. And I just, what is, you said market, market value price? What is that for a condo in Woods Hole?
I'd like to answer.
Fair housing laws generally prohibit discrimination on the basis of age. There are two exceptions. Federal and state housing laws allow discrimination in favor of the agent and the exclusion of younger people, of children in particular, for two groups. There are two categories, it can be sixty-two or older, or it can be fifty-five and older. And if it's fifty-five or older, then up to twenty percent of the units can be, can have children in them. I think I have that about right. The Woods Hole Community Association insisted in our discussions with them that this be age-restricted housing. I think there is less traffic generated by it. And there is a need for, for housing for elderly, just as there's a need for housing for everybody. But this is a particular type of housing. Now, the previous project, Chris Weis's project, well, Chris Weis was a developer of senior housing. Developed, when he got to Woods Hole, probably seven other facilities across the Cape, including Dillingham Place in Falmouth, buildings that actually had a significant amount of common space and concierge services in them. So the history of the previous approvals and the negotiation with the Community Association was for age-restricted housing. So that's what we have. It's a, it's a, it's a niche, and it's probably, without the Community Association and the history, Mark Bogosian might not have wanted to have the restriction. But it's what the Community Association wants, what's the, it's the history of the recent approvals for the site. Thanks.
I'd like to point out that it's age-restricted to fifty-five plus, but from what I was reading, only one person in that apart, in that housing unit has to be fifty-five. Last time I knew, some people marry younger. There might be children in there, so, yep, yeah.
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, are you familiar with the housing production plan that was just completed?
I read the entire report in its October draft. There's a slightly more recent draft, which I guess is the completed draft. I imagine it wasn't changed much. It's about a hundred and sixty pages long, and yes, I've read the entire report. I'm also familiar with the, with the draft of the guidelines being put out by Massachusetts Housing Partnership for Local Action Unit, that is, affordable units created other than through, through forty-B. We've had discussions about the affordable housing. Anyway, yes, we're familiar with it, there's a need for this.
That was my question.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe, or I do believe, that in that production plan, there was a statement that Falmouth had no need for any additional fifty-five and over housing. That there was a need for over sixty-two, perhaps, and for disabled seniors to have accessible units.
Yeah, there were a number of priorities in the plan for, for smaller units, for rental units, and for units with the universal access for those older folks.
Right. There was no need in the town of Falmouth for fifty-five and over. And you can check with Ms. Sonnenberg, but that's.
I'll, I'll check on that. You know, fifty-five, sixty-two, there's a need for sixty-two, not for fifty-five.
Sixty-two with disabilities, because we have no, no accessible or very few accessible.
But this is, I'm not sure that has anything to do with site plan review either, whether it's fifty-five and older or sixty-two and older. I would like to make a correction, because I just don't want it to go unstated. Earlier, I said that the lot coverage by Structures was twenty percent, and in a business redevelopment district, up to thirty-five percent is a lot. That was not correct. The business redevelopment lot coverage is twenty percent, and our lot coverage is less than that, and in compliance with it.
And Kevin, you wanted to say something. I'm going to have to close this off unless the board wishes to continue past ten. Okay, and nobody wants to continue past ten?
The only thing I'd like to nail down, I'm not sure that we did, well, we would on the continuation, is there are the concerns about engineering and the timing on when we would see that.
That's come, that was my next question after Kevin was finished, so.
Just wanted to comment, I mean, I think we heard a number of interesting plans that were presented and discussed this night beyond the plans that we discussed. There was a ten-year period during which this property sat for sale, during which anyone could have bought it to implement those plans. That didn't happen. Certain members of the Dome at Woods Hole group have been at this since two thousand and six. We have their flyers from two thousand and six advocating for an art center at the dome. It was never purchased during that ten-year period when it sat fallow.
I want to go to Chairman, this is not in the period. This is not, this is.
I'm speaking to the plan.
It was brought up, and he is answering to that. And I did allow that to be brought up.
So the applicants have purchased the property, and this, what you see in front of you is the plan that's being presented. I mentioned it during the initial presentation, we think this is a good plan, we think this is a great plan. It's not going to be perfect for everyone. But we think that we can certainly take into account some of the questions and concerns the board has presented to us this evening. We can provide you with more information in hopes of allaying those concerns and addressing them. And we think that this can be a plan that this board will be happy to support and proud to support.
Thank you, Kevin. Now, I have a question to pose to the applicants. There, the engineering study has a number of things that have to be tackled. There may be other things too, because I haven't, some of the reports weren't in yet when this happened. I think, what was it, Board of Health wasn't in. And there have been a number of questions that have come up here that can be looked at. And Charlotte made a request, and so there are a lot of things that are still open. So the question is, how soon do you think that you could be ready to come back?
Well, the engineer tells us we can have the staff engineering report addressed by the end of next week in terms of the elevation plan and potentially a section rendering. We think we could have that within that same timeframe by the end of next week.
So we're looking at, we have a possibility February twelfth or February twenty-sixth. What do you feel more comfortable?
Twelfth.
The twelfth, okay. Tom said okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we will see you again on the twelfth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to continue. Did I hear the board say until February twelfth?
Sunday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wouldn't want to miss all the fun.
I mean, coin of auto, what was elected if I was Buckminster Fuller? I mean, come on, coin of auto.
I always do.
Sure.
We have general correspondence.
Sorry, there was a copy for the. But we'll be back here on the twelfth.
That's great.
But, you know, I still look at it as, if you have something, fine.
Thank you. And there's enough for everybody, yes, I see that.
Do we need to sign this tonight?
This one wants us to have it.
What is it?
I don't know.
And it's like I've mentioned before, we mentioned, uh, those that came to us, the Cultural Arts Committee.
I raised a lot of money.
And. Oh, okay.
I don't need it.
Folks, can you leave the room, please? We've got to finish the meeting.
We have a meeting going on. Could you please, we have a longer meeting.
Not much longer.
No.
No, we're trying to.
Three minutes that we have, come on, let's go. We can skip all of that. We go to that.
Why do we have to? No, right, we can, I don't need to do that, yes.
We did that, which is the only thing that needs to be done.
All we need is the general correspondence.
And we have nothing in general correspondence, all these. And then we have that.
Okay, this is going to be fast. Call the meeting back to order. There's a, in the general correspondence, there's a campaign finance notice that we all have to read and sign. Could you please pass that down?
Where was that other thing we have to sign? It's right here, we're supposed to go to the office to sign it. One hand, right there.
Yep, let's send it down. We're going to send the other one down too, so you don't have to save everybody a trip to the office. And. Tom, the next meeting is.
If you are?
February twelfth still?
Well, the next regular scheduled meeting on the Planning Board is February twelfth, however.
Next Saturday, we have a. Next Saturday, we have a joint meeting with them. And we've been asked to give a quick presentation on form-based code at the joint meeting. And at the same time, Tom, is, we're trying to get a timeline out of the Cape Cod Commission for that work. And we'll have that maybe tomorrow, the next day?
Correct. I reached out to Heather Harper, letting her know about the joint meeting coming up, and that we needed to put some meat on the bones of our framework, essentially, for the Cape Cod Commission's work in helping move David Straits along. So Ms. Harper and I will be talking, I think it's Thursday.
Thursday?
I have a very full Wednesday with site business and things like that. But we're talking this week. And for Saturday morning, I'll have the whole parameters put together, and I'll get them out to you prior to. So we've got an idea of what's going on with David Straits, what we can expect for a decision back from the Cape Cod Commission on the DFCA funding, and what that scope of work will take and how long that will take to get back to us. So when we are at the session on Saturday, we can inform people what's going on with that.
Future agenda items, anyone have anything?
No, but which Saturday is this meeting?
This one.
This one's coming Saturday.
It is at 8:30, and it is going to be at the Falmouth Academy.
You haven't been getting the notices?
I didn't get anything about that.
The paper was wrong.
Something's wrong, because I've gotten three.
Pretty sure I've been forwarding, I think I forwarded the most recent draft.
I've got it three or four times.
Of the selectmen.
Yeah, I've got them.
We'll check and see who it went out to. But for the most part, I kind of have a regular email thing that I sent out to.
I will go back and check.
I think you're on it.
It's tedious about checking my emails.
Yes.
Okay.
Thought that all those people have made it cool.
Well, we've covered the next minute, future items. I have nothing else on the agenda.
Go to adjourn.
Thank you.